Good evening, everyone.
Ms. Dorr. Ms. White. Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young.
Present.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Page. Ms. Jones. We have a quorum.
Do we have someone here to provide the translation services announcement?
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of River City Middle School, we welcome you. If you need interpretation from English to Spanish, please come see me. I will be at the table in the back with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for anyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I will now make this announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos, bienvenidos a la Escuela de River City. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor dirigirse a la mesa de atrás, adonde estaré yo con los interpreters. Yo les puedo dar audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión de la Junta Escolar en español. También se profesionará interpretación para los que están viendo la reunión en través de Zoom. Lastly, I want to remind our school board members and anyone making public comments to please speak at a normal pace and keep your face no more than a couple of inches from the microphone so that our interpreters can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance and then our Moment of Silence. Ms. White will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next, we... So move.
Thank you. Ms. Page has moved. Ms. Page, I made a motion to accept the minutes for July 18th. Do I have a second?
Second.
It was seconded by Ms. Rizzi. Any questions, any discussion? By the court of law, please.
Ms. Dorr. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Jones. Motion passes.
Two. Next, we're going to a...
I move that we adopt the agenda for the August 6th, August 1st school board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Madam. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that.
Because I'm back here.
Okay. You didn't stop me. So Ms. Gibson wants to amend the agenda. Ms. Gibson, what is your amendment?
I'd like to add a budget, I'm sorry, a board discussion item to discuss the Arthur Ashe Building.
Ms. Gibson, you do realize that our discussion on the Arthur Ashe will be limited if the motion passes?
So in our last closed session, there were discussions related to Arthur Ashe that I don't believe should have been enclosed. I understand that our attorney is saying that there's a conflict of interest. I believe that should be discussed in public.
Okay, board members, you've heard the request by Ms. Gibson to amend the agenda to add the Arthur Ashe. Since Arthur Ashe discussion to... We do not have a section for board business because we were planning to discuss the reopening plans presented by the superintendent. So we would, just for procedural purposes, Madam Attorney, add a section for board business if that so passes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We will make that Section 10 if it passes. So it'll be Section 10, 10.01, to add board business, to add board business to discuss the Arthur Ashe Center. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I don't agree with having that as Item 10. That would then follow the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. So that would... We could move that if it passes to Section 8, and Section 8 will be Section 9, and Section 9 will be Section 10.
That's... It should come before Item 5, other informational items.
Is there a reason why it can't be where I just suggested it?
We never have... Generally, after other informational items, we don't typically have, you know, board discussions. So that would be contrary to the way we've typically conducted business.
The... Pass has been yes. Board business is discussed before other informational items. Madam Attorney, for procedural purposes, does... Do we have a policy to state that it has to go above?
There's no policy with respect to the ordering of the agenda to that degree.
Okay. So Ms. Gibson, are you amenable to agree with where I suggested so we can continue with the flow of the agenda?
So my motion will be that it will be board discussion item prior to board action item. That's typical how it works. First, we have, I believe, the discussion items, then we have action items. So that would be, that would move to Section 3. I'm sorry, Section 4. That's the motion on the table.
Typically, the board action, the board business comes after the board action. But I believe that we can enumerate it.
That's fine.
And then put it where, and call it for where we want to discuss it in the order of the agenda.
So let's make it Item 5.
The motion from Ms. Gibson is to add a discussion on the Arthur Ashe Center to Section 5, and then that, if it passes, everything under that will shift. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It was moved, and second, it was moved by Ms. Gibson to amend the agenda to add the Arthur Ashe Center discussion to Section 5. That would be, if it passes, board business. So that would just be 5.01. And it was moved, it was seconded, excuse me, by Ms. Rizzi. Any discussion, any questions before we take a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Dorr. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
No.
Ms. Page.
No.
Ms. Jones. Motion passes.
Thank you. So just for those who are present and those who are watching, so you can follow us with the agenda. When we get to Section 5, that is now board business, and we're going to have a 5.01, the Arthur Ashe discussion, and then new business... I don't want to think out loud. And then 6 will be other informational items. So everything, of course, moves down. Okay. Thank you for being patient. All right. Next, we'll have public information matters.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, please.
Repeat that because I interrupted you.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, please? So move. It was moved by Ms. Rizzi to adopt the agenda as amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Was seconded by Ms. Rizzi. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Was that seconded by Ms. Rizzi or Ms. Gibson?
I meant Ms. Gibson, excuse me.
Ms. Dorr. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke. Ms. Page. Ms. Jones. Motion passes.
Thank you. So we have amended the agenda for this evening. And I also just want to take this opportunity, board colleagues, to remind you that we have a norm that we want to end by 10 o'clock. So be watching the time and reminding us where we are. Madam Clerk, can you provide the policy for public information, please?
Yes, ma'am. Conduct of speakers. Speakers shall state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff member. The school board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to: one, campaign for public office; two, promote private business ventures; or three, use profanity or vulgar language. If a community member's comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer that individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refusal to abide by the policy will result in the forfeiture of the remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing. In lieu of any oral presentation, comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting but shall be posted to the school board platform board docs.
Thank you. Before we go into public comment, Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question based on your comment. And thank you for the clarity about board meeting ending at 10. But I just want clarity, that includes also the executive session, correct?
I believe from the writing in our governance manual that was done in 2021, it included the closed session. And I may be wrong. I can go back and check. I can pull it up and check to verify, but I believe it does include executive session.
Right. And that's correct. But I just want to, I just wanted clarity.
Yes, ma'am. It does. Thank you. All right. We're prepared for public comment. I have one person who signed up. But of course, all of you are free to provide public comment to the governance team. The one person who signed up is Ms. Mary Gresham.
Testing. Good afternoon. My name is Mary Gresham, and I stand before you this afternoon as the manager of custodial services. I am here tonight because my teammates are bothered, and I am bothered. I'm going to try really hard to keep my composure. In the last three months, I have lost three custodians, died. And I need this schoolboy to understand. One of them left the conditions of his building, went home and dropped dead. That's a lot. It's a lot. We've got to do better about the culture in our buildings. We've got to do better about all support employees, all. And when I say all, my team is here. We are a team. Stand up, please, team. We are a team. And this is not, this is probably a test. We've got to do better. I want to thank the schoolboy chairperson and Michelle Hadasco for willing to meet with us, to talk to us about our concerns. But I had to come tonight because unless culture changes, nothing else is going to happen. I'm sorry. It's not. We're the first people there and the last people to leave. You can pay bus drivers as much as you want to. They deserve every penny. They can transport children to the door. You can pay food service workers as much as you want to. They deserve every penny. They can't cook in the kitchen until my custodians turn the key and turn the lights on. I'm going to meet with Dr. Harris Mohammed. I'm going to meet with Michelle Hadasco. But I had to come here tonight to say, we stand in unity. We're going to organize. We have to. Because the culture, if it does not change, when you have people walk in the building every morning and not speak, not speak to the custodial staff.
Thirty seconds.
That's a problem. It's a problem. And until we change it, we're going to be in the river with no oars because that's where we are. We're going to organize. We're going to talk, and we're going to work through this together. I've done 37 years here. I ain't ready to walk away yet. I'm close, but it ain't time yet because my team needs a voice.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We're going to do this. Thank you. Thank y'all so much. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Next. If you didn't sign up, make sure you sign the clipboard, please. Thank y'all so much.
I know your time is very valuable. Randy O'Neal, 14344, John Tyler Memorial Highway. This is my son, Roman O'Neal.
Hi.
And we're here to thank you for your response. We've had a little bit of some technical difficulties down in Choll City coming back this way. So we just wanted to let you know that we're following up on the questions that you have for us, and we hope to get the same programs going that we've operated throughout the state for 20 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? No. We, so we don't take questions from the floor? Yes, ma'am. But you're more than welcome to come down and speak.
Good evening. My name is Kathryn Holland. I'm at Lucia Brown Middle School. And I want to bring up a share of what's going in the school system today. Guess y'all aware of it, you know? With the kids, there's no leadership. Principals getting paid, they're not doing anything. Kids just taking over the schools. We got to get some order to schools. We need order. Need to put somebody in that's going to do their job. The people that come to school, the principals, they're getting paid, they're not doing anything. So they should be on a probation. If they can't get it right, they got to go. We need some discipline in school. It starts from the head. We custodian, we doing the best we can. We work hard. If you was a custodian came in the school and seen what I seen, you'd be saying, oh, God can't do this. Well, I do it because I love what I do, and I love to clean, and I love people. I believe making changes. Ms. Gresham, she's wonderful manager, supervisor. We have a team, and we just want things to get done. The cycle got to stop. Kids with the cell phones, getting off the bus with sodas first thing in the morning. People in the office calling you five minutes for stuff that don't make sense, like a band-aid, come pick it up. Or a lady goes to the bathroom with her monthly and wants you to come and clean. Oh, no. That's not what we do. We are there to clean the building in a safe environment for the children. Something has to give. You know, we already underpaid. We got people working the school, two, three people cleaning the whole building. No appreciation, nobody cares. Nobody said, thank y'all. Here's a gift card, take your family. Nobody cares. But we the rock. We the rock of the business. We the rock. You know? Nobody understand that. You know, it's a shame that you have to go and complain and complain about something when you already seeing your ass what's going on, but nobody's doing nothing about it. A change got to come. The chain got to be broken. They getting all the money and bills. Get some principals that going to be principals. Get some teachers going to teach. Don't let the kids roam the halls. Everybody don't have to go to the bathroom. I just want to say this, you know? I feel like I had to share. And I'm praying to God that God changed and turned around because I continue to pray, and I know he will.
Thank you. Before the next person speaks, we have an echo through the Zoom or the YouTube. That's really bad. I'm receiving messages that it's an echo really bad. So I just wanted to share that with you. I don't know what we can do to fix us up here. Talk Lord, move the mic away. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Velma Seymour, and I serve as president of the Richmond Region League of United Latin American Citizens. Superintendent Kamras, honorable members of the Richmond School Board. On behalf of the Richmond Region LULAC Education Committee, I'm submitting the letter sent to Dr. Harris Mohammed and Mr. Kamras detailing our proposal for a commission on the status of Latino students in Richmond Public Schools. In part greetings, Dr. Harris Mohammed and Dr. and Mr. Kamras. We are writing to you in your capacity as school board chair and superintendent of schools to follow up on our representative's public comment at the school board meeting on July 18th with respect to establishing a community-wide commission on the status of Latino students in Richmond Public Schools. We believe such a commission is needed to comprehensively assess current issues related to the academic and non-academic success of Latino students, including English learners, and to identify policy, programmatic, and administrative steps aimed at significantly improving academic and non-academic outcomes for RPS Latino students. May I pause to ask for, I forgot in the beginning, to ask for my five times as an org speaking on behalf of an organization. I'm five minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I assumed that's what we were going to do for you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Submitted in, because of time, I'm not going to be able to read it in its entirety, but the proposal is detailing the proposed charge, timeline, membership, and work plan on the commission. We believe our proposal is consistent with the dreams for RPS strategic plan and the system's general commitment to equity for all students. We would welcome the opportunity for dialogue and discussion concerning any aspect of this proposal. We also urge you to move quickly to formally establish this commission prior to the start of the 2022-23 academic year and to name the commission members by no later than September 30, 2022, so the commission can begin its important work. The preamble and statement of the purpose is, whereas graduation rates for Latino students are the lowest of any racial, ethnic group in RPS, our students are reported on-time graduation rates of 40%, 33%, and 57% for the classes of 2019, 2020, and 2021, compared to 71%, 72%, and 79% for all RPS students those same three years. Whereas, Latino students are the fastest-growing segment of RPS enrollment, increasing from under 620 in 2003, '04, to over 1,500 in 2010, '11, to over 5,000 in 2021. And whereas, despite the rapid growth, RPS has never focused sustained system-wide priority attention on specific issues impacting the well-being and achievement of Latino students. And whereas, equitable, culturally competent, and fully inclusive treatment of Latino students as well as English learners, including respect for all rights of students and families, is both a legal and moral imperative. Whereas, RPS and its strategic plan makes a top-level commitment to equity and declares that our very destiny as a city rests on ensuring that our schools become engines of opportunity for all of our students, our children, regardless of background. And whereas, strengthening specifically the safety, experience, and performance of Latino students will positively impact the experience and performance of all RPS students regardless of race and ethnicity. The school board, at the urging of community representatives, moves to create the commission on the status of Latino students in Richmond Public Schools as a partnership between RPS and the community for the purpose of identifying, highlighting, and developing an action plan to mitigate and overcome the numerous issues and obstacles now impeding the success of Latino students in RPS. The initial term of the commission is to run from October 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, with a possibility of six months, six-month extension if needed to allow the commission to comply. I'm sorry, did you say time? Oh. We thank you very much. I would like to hand out the letters that were submitted with the proposal to the board as well as anybody in the audience who would like to read it in its entirety. We have some in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you for your time.
School board representative from the 4th district. You can hand them to Mr. Young and get them to our clerk. School Board Representative from the 4th District, you can hand them to Mr. Young and get them to our clerk.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. Honorable School Board Members, Superintendent Kamras. My name is Darrell Turner. I am a preschool teacher at MLK Preschool Center. As well as the Vice President of the Richmond Education Association. However, I am coming this evening to speak as an individual. I just want to say that. I'm glad that we are taking action on this preschool schedule. As a preschool teacher, I can tell you last year. Was a very long day for many of our students. In my own classroom, I would witness students as young as three years old when you have children playing in centers, music being played, instruments being played. A lot of the sounds you would hear in a typical preschool classroom that would walk in and fall asleep right on the carpet. So I'm glad that we're taking action on this to shorten this day to make sure that it is more developmentally appropriate for our young learners. I want to make sure that as we are looking at this preschool schedule, we also keep in mind some of the wraparound services that we need. Now, in the proposal, I know it mentions, you know, how we're going to handle after-school care for our preschool centers. I want us to make sure that we aren't forgetting our preschool classrooms in elementary schools. And I know that, you know, teachers have been sharing their concerns on that. Also, I just want us to keep in mind that as we look at the preschool year and how our student makeup will be. I want us to keep in mind that due to state guidelines, toilet training has become, you know, a big part of our preschool day. And I can tell you from last year. When I had eight or nine children that we were trying to potty train at once and either myself or my assistant would have to leave the room to make sure that that child was cared for and that we were working with them. That we keep that in mind. I just want you all to know that. I won't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I'll speak for myself in saying that, you know, as we go through this year, as we work to find out what solutions work best for our children, that, you know, we preschool staff, you know, we are here to work with you guys. We want to bring more solutions and want to keep hammering at it so that we get it right, so that we have the best possible schedule this coming year for our little ones. So thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals present that would like to speak to the School Board? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Latasha Clary. I am a custodian. First, I want to say, I gotta get myself together. I just found out that I have cancer. And I, Ms. Gresham. Really gave me her support and to let me know that my health comes first. She's very good in letting all of us know that. But the problem that I'm having with the culture in the buildings is that us, we as custodians get treated, to me, bad. Because when we, when they have gatherings, parties, events in the building, we're the first to set up. And we're the last to take down. But when they, when, if we offered anything, believe me, is when it's going in the trash. To me, I feel like I'm at the bottom. The bottom. Any industry that deals with cleaning, custodial work, we always at the bottom. We always. If your office is not in the basement, where, you, you're nothing. It's like, we feel like we're nothing. Who wants to get a piece of box that they offering you that's everybody else don't have? That's not fair. That's not fair to us when we have to clean it up and we set it up for them. My team, my school had an event at a, at a, at somewhere outside of the school. They was giving away prizes and gave them, and my team, and my team got some. But you know what they told them? You can't get it because you weren't there. How can they get it if they gotta work? They were at work. How can they receive it if they're working? How fair is that? And they're working to clean their building and clean up behind them. So to me, I just think it, it do need to change. It really do. From the principals to the teachers, it really needs to change. Because we are called on to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to, I think, Ms. Williams, would you like to? Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Lakeisha Williams, and I'm coming to you tonight to discuss a lot. Um, I want to first start off by saying that. I appreciate my principal. I appreciate Dr. Michelle Hudasco. Ms. Angela Jones. And our chief, crew chief in our school building, Mr. Demetrius Blesso. I have came before this school board seven times. Asking for some help with children with asthma. And it led me to a court situation. Of them having to do unprecedented work. For the lack of communication and irresponsible duties of someone else. This lady said he had to go and fix two other people's jobs. I have came before y'all seven times. Asking for someone to put something in place to support these children. The next thing is, as a preschool teacher. There have been conversations carried on since the last day of school pertaining to preschool. And I haven't heard anything. Up until last week. I wasn't offered a survey that went out. My co-teacher wasn't consulted about any of the curriculum materials. He didn't receive any updates. But today, we had a gracious meeting. With Mr. Kamras and Ms. Hudasco. And Ms. De Souza to come to a conclusion of what can support preschool. I didn't see any of you guys up there. And you are the ones that make the decisions and vote on what we do next. I'm in a preschool building. Everything get blamed on my principal. But she don't have a fine clue what to hold me accountable for because somebody couldn't have a transparent conversation with her about a program that just was smacked in her building. I appreciate the meeting that we had today. Thank you, Mr. Kamras. And I appreciate you following up stating that you're gonna follow up and try and keep tabs on it. But I will hope that Ms. De Souza can beef up her
Thirty seconds.
Administration to communicate with building-level principals a little bit better. My principal went the whole entire school year trying to figure it out.
That's why I was, I didn't want to interrupt.
I know you want to stop me for saying Mr. Kamras' name, but the, the meeting was public.
Correct.
The meeting was public. It's no secret. It was a, it was an email that was sent out. It was public.
Ms. Williams? It's, it's our policy there. I'm not
I'm sorry. It's a policy that you guys make sure that we are in compliance, and it's not happening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jenny Agamo, and I'm an advocate and parent of RPS. And, um, right, I work at Commonwealth Catholic Charities in the resettlement department. And so I work with refugees from all over the world. And though predominantly many of our families are Afghanistan, reasoning to come to America stays the same. And that is to find a better way of life for their family. Typically, it's very dangerous from where it is that they're coming from, so finding them a home here in Richmond. And finding a safe environment is of the utmost importance. So a lot of immigrants that come here have suffered some sort of trauma and have suffered from PTSD, and that definitely includes children. That is why as a school district, we need to be culturally sensitive to our non-English-speaking families. I know they are looking for ways to integrate into our communities, and RPS is for most families the first point of contact with that. Our Latino families have no choice but to trust whatever our school administrator and school leaders tell them. We have to make sure that we are doing right by our Latino families by assessing each child fairly with no biased assumptions and/or making sure each student is given the same treatment that every child would receive in any of our nine districts. This Commission for Latinos is not set up to place blame on anyone or in any school, but instead a chance to talk to our Latino families, students, and teachers, as well as school leaders, and see what is working and what isn't. It's a way to say to our Latino community, especially our Latino students, that RPS is here to give Latino students the tools to succeed and help them create a successful future. Please vote to put this special commission on the August 15th agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here would like to speak with the School Board? Okay, thank you.
Setting my timer. Three minutes or two? I always forget. Is it three minutes or two?
Follow the School Board Clerk. Ms. Richardson.
It's three minutes.
It's three minutes.
For individuals, five for
Five for, if you're representing an organization or entity, yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're having a nice summer, safe, relaxing summer. My name is Beth Almore. I'm a 4th District resident, taxpayer, homeowner, and I'm a teacher in RPS. I'm also a member of the Richmond Educators Association. And a member of VCor, the Virginia Caucus of Rank and File Educators. I've been elected to the REA Collective Bargaining Team, but I am not speaking on behalf of that body. I wrote a novel-length public comment that I submitted earlier today, so I'll just summarize it as best I can. I'd like to request, first of all. My mother was a kindergarten teacher for 35 years in Connecticut. And she always taught me the number one person you have to make friends with and respect is the custodian in the building. So I try to do that. And obviously, we all should, and I'm very distraught to hear some of the experiences expressed by our custodians. But hopefully, we can fix it. So I'd like to just request really basic things. I'd like to ask that the specific schools each School Board member represents be added to the RPS website. I think that's pretty basic. I'd like to request that the preschool vacancy numbers be disaggregated from the elementary schools so that we can see them. There's five preschools, some of them have their own buildings, they all have their own principal. All of them have climate and culture issues that, um, you know, need to be addressed, noticed, and named in order to make sure we're filling those positions as best we can. I'd like to formally request that going forward, the Teacher Advisory Council take minutes at every meeting, including committee meetings. Take attendance at every meeting and distribute those minutes to all teachers in RPS. The minutes should include the composition of the council, teachers, chairs, locations, subject areas, and grade levels. I'd like to request that, I know this is expensive, but I'd like to request that all workers in RPS receive electronic swipe keys. This is a best practice in terms of safety and just being in a 21st century environment. Obviously, the Fire Department and Police Department should have this too. And last thing, thank you. And last thing I'll just say is, again, this is in enormous detail in my written public comment. I appreciate the energy that brings us to need a teacher retention task force. But in my view, the collective bargaining team is the teacher retention task force. And personally, I'd like you to release us from the constraint of only bargaining for two issues. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last two? Because as you were talking, the clerk said time, so I didn't catch the
Thank you. I would like the board to consider releasing the collective bargaining team from only bargaining for two issues in light of the catastrophic teacher retention crisis.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it anyone else here that would like to speak to the School Board? Anyone else here that would like to speak with the School Board? Anyone else here that would like to speak with the School Board? See, now we're gonna move on to administration, administration business. Mr. Kamras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are going to begin with staffing. I'm not gonna go through this line by line. You all have the presentation. Obviously, we still have a great deal of work to do. We are certainly making progress, but still have a significant number of vacancies. We are beginning to see the added incentives and other programs that we have in place are beginning to make an impact. I'm very excited that the bus operator number is now down to five with five offers pending. I believe a couple came in today, so we are closing in on filling all of those. We still have to keep a close eye on the food service assistance. We are at 50 vacancies. Obviously, that is critical going into the school year. You'll see each cluster broken out by school. Most schools at this point are below five vacancies with a few exceptions, most notably at the secondary level. Henderson and River City, where we are this evening. Both above 10 vacancies. Making modest progress, but those are two that we are putting all effort and attention towards. And at the High School Center, we are, uh, high school level, my apologies. Working to fill the additional CTE positions that the board included in our most recent budget. We've also included central office vacancies. All the information the board requested about our university partnerships with Union, VCU, Virginia State, U of R, Randolph-Macon, and other practicum experiences that we have with a whole slew of universities and colleges. Provided an overview of the critical shortage positions as determined by the state. We have reached out to all retirees from the last three academic years about the opportunity to serve in a critical shortage area. And have launched additional advertising and recruitment efforts, which, some of which you'll see here in the Richmond area, but most of it is actually outside the Richmond area. Other parts of Virginia, DC, Maryland, North Carolina, and so on. Without, I'll pause and take any questions on stopping.
Are there any questions on, and I know I have people behind me, so just say my name because I can, of course, see you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if the administration has done an investigation regarding the teachers that have left the district this year in regards to the level of experience that they have. I think it's important to highlight that, you know, when we lose teachers in, in the building, you know, it's, it's not just the, it's not just a body in a, in a role. That teacher leaves with a good amount of experience that, that, you know, specific to the needs of the kids in, in our, in our school district. And so, um, you know, if we're replacing the experienced teachers with unexperienced teachers, there is a cost to the district with that. And that's not to say that, you know, teachers obviously, you know, learn and grow, but, but, but we have to maintain some level of balance between folks that have been around and folks that haven't. And so, um, you know, is there an analysis or data that speaks to the average tenure of teachers now and, and before? And I'm wondering too, you know, when looking at the building-specific teacher turnover. You know, are there learnings, opportunities to, to make strides that way?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have that information available this evening, but certainly happy to pull that information together or whatever we do have in terms of tenure, both of remaining individuals and, and those who have exited the system. Obviously, there's still a fair amount of movement going on, but once the year opens and we have that settled, we can certainly gather all that information and look at it on a school-by-school basis as well.
Ms. White, and then Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Renzi. Ms. White, Ms. Burke, Ms. Renzi. Ms. White, and then Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Renzi. Ms. White, Ms. Burke, Ms. Renzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camaras, I have a question on looking at one of the schools that is really high, the middle school which has twenty River City. And I heard from a applicant that was, is a retired from RPS, and I'd like to know how often do they go back into the pool to see, is it a daily thing? Because they said that they had applied for at least three positions and they're still saying pending. And they are retired and they are qualified. So how often do you go back and pull from those pools to see?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The pool is reviewed not just daily, but multiple times each day. If there is a specific candidate, Ms. White, that you would like me to look into, if you could email me the information, I will make sure the team takes a look first thing tomorrow morning. I do want to note sometimes the delay, or not so much a delay, but part of the process is the team has to verify licensure status, things of that nature before offers can be made. But again, send me the name and information, and I will make sure that we look into it first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. White? Okay. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at the overall report, I was very pleased to see the university partnerships. Grow Your Own is something that I've, I've been a supporter of for years, and years ago, we did have that in Richmond Public Schools through grant programming. I have two questions. Number one, I was, first of all, was happy to see that instructional assistants, as well as substitutes that may be certified in other areas, would have the opportunity to, I believe I read at Virginia Union online courses, for three or four-week online courses. But my question is also, I was pleased to see that every university in the area has been tapped to be in support of, for there to be a partnership in place moving forward. But knowing also that we are competing with other area school systems that have more openings than we do, even though our pay may be a little bit more. We all in the United States, in the state of Virginia and beyond, people are moving all about. So people have choices, but at the end of the day, we do want to have a climate and a retention rate that does keep folk as content as they possibly can be in, in the teaching and learning experience. What my question is, I saw here twenty students here, twenty students there, and I believe in the budget, it was $200,000. I'm not sure. My question is, do we, are we financially covered? That's my first question, to handle the amount of students that are there. I'm assuming that we are, but I'm asking. And number two, are these persons in our system, the long-term subs or substitutes and instructional assistants, are they already aware of signing up for these programs? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The wonderful benefit of many of these programs is that they are funded by the universities or by state funds or by philanthropy. So for many of these, we actually do not have a cost. We do have some funds in the budget, and I'm grateful to the board added some additional funds for these types of programs going forward this year. As for your second question, ever since we spoke more publicly about these programs and the importance of them and the existence of them, it got a lot of media coverage over the last two weeks. I know I myself have probably gotten a dozen emails from IAs or long-term substitutes who are interested in participating. So that has been incredibly helpful, and we're going to be talking about this more and more. It's not just about preparing for this fall, but I truly believe this is our pathway to a sustainably staffed school system, is to continue to grow within our community. We have a lot of very talented IAs and long-term subs who, with just a few more courses, could be licensed teachers. So I am particularly excited about these programs.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So my, my other question is, if I may, they know of it through the media, social media. I've got, I'm sure all of us on the board have received questions. So the programs, you don't register now for first semester. That has not come along yet. I don't want anyone to miss the opportunity that's been it, a Richmond Public Schools employee, instructional assistant or substitute for the last five, 10 years and miss that opportunity. Because we have some great persons that continue to serve as, as the rock. So my question is, it hasn't, I don't want them to miss that opportunity when it's time to apply.
We will ensure that that information is frequently, loudly, and compellingly shared with our instructional assistants and IAs. Some of these programs are new, so it's, they, they themselves are getting public notice out, but we will certainly make sure to communicate directly with our IAs and subs and others to make sure that they are fully aware of all of the opportunities, so they don't miss any of those deadlines.
And one last thought, going back to our crew that just left, we may have persons, because that has happened, where people were serving on the maintenance crews, and I had that opportunity where I worked to move up the ladder. So I hope that it's out there for everybody, whether it's family members, neighbors, but the opportunity to make sure that everyone that believes in the children in the city of Richmond and, and had been with us all along, for them to also have that opportunity to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Ms. Renzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just want to reiterate something my colleague just said. You know, I heard from a teacher that hiring new teachers, certainly, we see the motivation for that. We see the reasons for it, but we have to work to address the underlying issues that have, you know, contributed to this exodus, and I don't think COVID is the only thing that we're mitigating here. I think we all know that. So, you know, working, and I know that we've got these climate committees, right? Is that what they are at the schools? But we need to really work to make sure that we are addressing these underlying issues. A couple of questions I have. Could we get regular updates on how well these partnerships with the universities and colleges are, are working? I would like to see, you know, some updates and, you know, just about how effective they are with attracting teachers to RPS. And then I have a question about how many of our retired community members have expressed interest in returning?
If I may, Madam Chair, yes, happy to do a periodic update on the university programs and any data that we have in terms of efficacy. I don't have the number of retirees, but I'm happy to pull that and have that for our next school board meeting. I'm happy to update the board on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Thank you. I have a follow-up based on the questions that I sent previously. So my question is, first, I want to thank you for this detailed update. But in regards to our partnerships with the universities, in particular, our HBCUs, our talented HBCUs. I'm saying, you said that Hampton, Hampton University, that the numbers, I guess, was small. But I would suggest that you reach back out to Hampton University because they are under new leadership. They have a new president, President Darrell Williams, but I think it's important that we tap in to all of our universities surrounding and also to strengthen the partnership. And also would like to see a periodic update regarding this partnership and how RPS is reaping the benefits for our teachers, res, teacher residency program.
Yes, I'm happy to reach back out to Hampton. Not just the size is a challenge, also geography is a challenge, given location and the need in the Hampton Roads area as well. But of course, happy to reach back out and, and see if there's any opportunities for further partnership there.
Madam Chair, a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a clarity. So we do have a partnership with Norfolk State, correct? Or is that something that we are seeking to create?
My understanding is, at this time, we do not have a partnership with Norfolk State.
Okay, I just, I thought I saw the name listed.
It was, it, it is a university that we recruit at, like Hampton, but we do not have a formal relationship. Again, I think the geography issue is one, given that Norfolk State, Hampton, others, there's a great need for teachers in that part of Virginia as well. I think they largely are working with those school divisions in that area. But again, I will happily partner with any and all universities, so we will continue to push forward with anyone who is willing to engage in that partnership.
Right, and another comment. Just would like to follow up. So the students that attend Norfolk and Hampton are not just from the Tower Region, but from all over. So Richmond, I'm sure is a possible attractive area for our new graduates in the teachers residency program. So my point is, we need to tap into everybody. Don't just limit ourselves to surrounding areas, but reach out, extend all the branch to other universities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camaras, I know that we have a lot of districts that are hiring substitutes, and I have a concern because in RPS, we have substitutes that enter into classes, one week, two weeks, long-term substitutes. And I know in September, they sent out a letter to the parents because parents have rights for highly qualified teachers. And I noticed that I received several of these letters. But parents have a right to refuse to have their children in classes with substitutes. So what is the actual plan if, if parents do not want to put their children in a class that the teacher is not highly qualified in their provision?
Ms. White, I would have to investigate that further. I, I don't have a detailed answer for you on that this evening, so I would like the opportunity to go back, take a look at the regulations and follow up with the board either over email or at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, relevant to recruiting teachers, I pray colleagues that will revisit the policy that requires our teachers, our faculty and staff to mask up for the duration of the day. Candidly, our neighbors do not require that of their faculty and staff, and it's my contention that it's yet one more onerous obstacle as it relates to us recruiting folks for consideration Richmond Public Schools. So colleagues, invite us as a board to revisit that as soon as very possible. And Madam Chair, if I may, just inquire in the moment of the superintendent if he has any instruction or counsel relevant to perhaps when his administration may proffer some recommendation in regard to COVID mitigation and, and no longer requiring masks of faculty and staff for the duration of the day. Thank you.
This is a question that we will return to at our next board meeting. Right now, we're maintaining our summer guidance, which has removed the mask mandate for outdoors, but maintains it indoors. We'd like to keep an eye on transmission rates and make a recommendation to the board at our next meeting in advance of the start of the school year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. Ms. White? Ms. Renzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, just a, a note, I think that the speaker was right in terms of requesting that preschool vacancies be disaggregated from the general elementary absent, I mean, absence vacancies for our, for our information and for the public's information.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, and I will make sure that that is disaggregated on our next report.
Thank you. Mr. Camaras, I have a couple of questions. Can you share with the school board the approximate time it is taking for human resources to process applicants from the time the application is submitted to offer, to the offer being extended to the, um, the onboarding of the employee, which includes fingerprinting, background, any reference checks?
I don't have that data before me this evening. Again, happy to try to identify that for the board and, and share that at the next meeting. I would say it's highly variable by position and by the qualifications of the candidate. For example, if a teacher is applying from another jurisdiction in Virginia, they have a full Virginia license. The process is quite speedy. However, if it's somebody from out of state or within state without a full license, there's a certain amount of due diligence that, of course, we must do to determine if the candidate is eligible to teach at RPS. That, of course, makes things take a, a bit longer. But again, I'm happy to pull that information and ensure that at our next meeting.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. Every individual who applies for a teaching position that is not currently licensed in this state or out of the state, are they guaranteed a provisional license?
No, ma'am. They would have to meet certain requirements even to be eligible for a provisional license.
Thank you. Last question. Do we have any school-based administrative positions open? If so, which schools? And what is the plan fulfilling those administrative positions that are vacant at certain schools?
To the best of my knowledge, we do not have any administrative vacancies at this time.
At the school-based level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
We have some in central office. Thank you.
I want to be clear, there may be one floating out there that I don't know about, but when I checked last, they were all filled.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? School board colleagues? Very good, very good. All right, Mr. Camaras, you can continue with your reopening update. Next, we're going to discuss facilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have listed here all of the major CIP projects along with some other high-profile projects that are being performed this summer. As you can see, many of them will certainly come right down to the wire right before school starts, but we are slated for just about all of them to have them complete by the time that school does start. I'll share this more when I get to the Fox update, but the roofers are now on site replacing the portion of the roof that the board approved, so that is very exciting. Happy to take any questions.
Ms. White?
Mr. Camaras, looking at this, the facilities, roof repair to maintain warranty. What type of roof repair are you speaking of? Are you talking about patching? I'm seeing that a lot. What is?
Yes, ma'am. That is patching so that we are doing our due diligence to upkeep the roof and therefore maintain our warranty status.
Can I do a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
A follow-up question. I'm not sure what it have came in this facilities, but I did request updates on the alarms and notice about, the notice of violations for each facility, and I don't see that on here.
Thank you, Ms. White. I spoke to the chair about this today. She reminded me. I will pull all of that and have that for the board at our next meeting.
Thank you.
And Ms. White, I just want to state, yes, ma'am, I did follow it up because it was expected for this meeting, but we'll make sure we have it for you prior to, so you can review it. Our board members can review it. Any other que, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the date for completion on most of these items is August twenty-eighth, which I believe is a Sunday. Last year, for the start of school, a couple of my schools were really scrambling to, to have everything prepared in time. I know- I know folks worked over the weekend. And so it concerns me to see that the, the Sunday date there, I mean, we had all the custodians come speak. Is, I mean, are, are folks going to be paid overtime? Or is, is the anticipation that, that everything will be ready? Well, I don't know if it's the Friday before or the Thursday before.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the 28th was chosen as the sort of outside completion date, given that school starts on the 29th. Many of these will actually be completed prior to the 28th. Also, many of these are performed by contractors, some of whom work weekends and, and other times. But certainly, if there is any need for RPS staff to work outside of hours, they would, of course, be compensated accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Camaras, I have a couple of questions if our board members are good. Have we had the opportunity as a division to inspect each building to ensure it follows all safety inspections? State, federal? Have we inspected off fire panels? Have we reviewed the fire codes? Have we ensured that all of the, and I may not be saying this accurately, but ensuring that all of the panels are accurately coded for the aid of, with the area code? And if so, do we have that documentation? And where is that documentation located? If it has to be located in the schools? If not, if no is the response to those questions, then what is the plan to hire under an emergency contract to get those things done?
Every RPS school has a working alarm panel now, and I am happy to provide that documentation to the board. In addition, every RPS school now has a Knox box, which is a box outside the school accessible by the fire department, only by the fire department. It includes the keys that would be needed to gain access to the building. This is something that we did after the Fox fire as a best practice. And so you'll see, it's a little box about this big that we worked in collaboration with the fire department to install. So we actually have pictures of every box, documentation of every box, and a photograph of the keys inside every box. I'm happy to share that as well.
Can anyone access that box? Do you have to have a code or?
Only the fire department has the access.
Okay. Thank you. I have a follow-up. Can we verify that every camera at every school is operable? Are there any schools, to your knowledge, that does, that have cameras that are not operable? If so, what is the plan? And the board is talking about plans. What is the plan? What is the next steps to make sure that all of those cameras are operable prior to students entering the building?
I cannot say that every school has 100% operable cameras. This is a known issue that we have worked on for, for quite some time. We have ensured that, for example, the most critical camera is working, which is for the front access point. But a number of our schools have cameras within the building that are not operable. We have worked with the facilities team and with our security team to tier schools based on the critical nature of the need and are working through tier one and will be in a position to have those completed soon. Then we would move to tier two, tier three. I'm happy to brief the board on that at any time. It may be best foreclosed, just to give them the sensitive nature of it, but it is also extremely expensive, millions of dollars. We have received security grants from the state that we're using, but it would be a multi-year, multimillion-dollar effort to ensure every school has every camera that it could possibly need. That is the, the current reality of our facilities.
Thank you. Last question I have is, and this may be, and I, I really thought about how to phrase this question, but it is critically important that the board and the public can hear some of the responses to this. How do we, how can we verify that every building in our division is safe? We've had some discussion in late spring about some instances in, in several of our schools, particularly Richmond Community High School. And so how can we determine? How do we know? And if we don't know, what is it that we can do to provide, as a board, the resources allowing the administration to implement those resources to ensuring that all schools are safe? Because it is all of our responsibility as a governance team to ensure that safety and security is priority in our division. Thank you.
I think the, the best way to answer that question, Madam Chair, is to provide documentation of everything that we do have in place, along with areas where we need to continue to invest. And I think that's true both from a facilities perspective, but also from a staffing perspective as well. And so, again, happy to incorporate that into our ongoing reopening updates.
Ms. White? Thank you, Mr. Camaras. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camaras, I thought that the board a couple of months ago, it was due to us before school start, the SOPs, safety SOPs. I hear that you had stated just now. So are they still going to be given to the board, the safety protocols and procedures?
Yes, ma'am, at the next, at our next school board meeting.
Okay, so all of that would be in there to let, I, I understood what the chair was trying to ask about how would we know? But wouldn't that be put into the SOPs? How someone could actually look at the SOP and know what to do? Because we have had some situations at, she said, community. Well, we had employees that did not know what action to take, the next action to take, because there was no SOP there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I do think that is a critical piece of it, but I also think documentation about some of the facilities items that we talked about is also an important piece of that, which wouldn't necessarily be in, in SOPs themselves. So happy to, to share everything that we have with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Camaras. Any other questions? Moving right along, right along on our agenda, academics update. Mr. Camaras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see, we have a lot of training going on this summer. One of the things I'm most excited about is the choice-based teacher professional learning tracks that we are offering this year, where teachers will be able to opt into whatever professional learning track, which will go over the course of the year, that they deem the best fit for what they need in their skill set, at their point in the career. We know from adult learning theory that when you have agency over your own learning, it has a dramatically positive impact on the stickiness, as it were, of that learning and the engagement in it. So very excited about that. We also have, starting tomorrow, our Summer Literacy Institute, very excited, which is for leaders and for teachers, really focusing in on the key elements of our literacy program. It's about professional learning. It's also about inspiration. We have some fantastic keynotes and really grateful to the curriculum and instruction team, Dr. Neighbors is here this evening, for really focusing on literacy this summer as we prepare going into next school year. We also have some training for our school improvement grant schools, our SIG schools, going on later this month. We have, partly last week and continuing on this week, our Summer Leadership Academy for our leaders. I would like to thank Madam Chair for coming and addressing our leaders. Very grateful for that. This is really focused on managing high-impact teams and addressing some of the culture issues that we have discussed this evening. I will also note, today was the kickoff of our Wellness Institute, where we brought together administrators, counselors, social workers, behavior specialists, family liaisons, communities and schools, everybody involved in the mental and emotional health of our students. Very grateful to Ms. Angela Jones for her leadership of that work to really focus in on supporting our young people as we come back to school. We know that is as important as reading and writing and math. And I am grateful to everyone who participated today. And again, also to Madam Chair for, again, bringing greetings. I think it's a really powerful group that met today, and we're looking forward to seeing their work in action this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
I just want, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to affirm choice pertaining to professional development. When I took office in 2017, Richmond Education Association had surveyed teachers relevant to PD, and only 25% of teachers that participated in the survey identified any value whatsoever relating to PD. But since this administration has assumed office, we've moved in the, in the right direction and dare I say that, that, that number that I just referenced, only 25% would be something very, very different now. So I want to commend everyone in regard to adopting that choice principle for professional development and really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camaras, my question is, do you have a Fall Literacy Institute since you have a lot of new hires coming to RPS?
That is a great question, Mrs. White. I don't think we have a Fall Literacy Institute on the books, but what we do have is ongoing training and support with respect to all things literacy, so that anyone who is hired after the Literacy Institute can get that support. Pulling off the institute is quite a lot of work, and we also don't want to pull teachers and, and others, reading coaches, out of buildings during the school year. So we will continue to support, especially our new hires as we make our way through the year.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Renzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question. Mr. Camaras, if you're able to give us specific examples of what these choice tracks would be for professional development? I'm also curious if teachers had any input in terms of what these tracks are? Were they asked what they need? Was there some kind of survey? Yeah, I'm just interested exactly in what these choice tracks are.
If I may, Dr. Neighbors, do you want to come and speak a little bit to the choice tracks?
Good evening. I don't have the choice tracks in front of me on my computers. It's charging. But I will tell you that the choice tracks were built around our data. So one of the things we looked at is our data from this previous year. Feedback from our professional learning from the spring, from our Spark sessions, and then looking at our data from our SOLs, our interims, PALS, et cetera, to look at where needs are. We got feedback from our academic architects, which are our teacher leaders, our coaches, principals, through a variety of avenues. I'm not a formal survey per se directly around this, but feedback throughout to design those choice tracks. And if my computer gets charged back up, I can pull up some for you and, and share those with you. That would be helpful.
Yes, thank you. I just wondered if teacher voices were included here in this, the, the design of these tracks. Thank you, Ms. Neighbors. I had another question. Are these, Ms. Marshall, Ms. Burke Alba, Zeta Elliott? Are these people going to be live? Are they coming in virtually?
I believe most of them are live, but I cannot say for certainty. Dr. Neighbors is nodding live, yes.
Thank you. Having the discussion around data that directly should be applied for student outcomes and student achievement, to hear that principals, coaches, principal leaders, I think the feedback was received from them, they're not in front of children. Our teachers are in front of children. And so when we leave teachers out of the unpacking of the data, one, and asking what are their needs, two, to address, three, any concerns that the building principal or the principal leader or the coaches have, to me, that's setting them up for failure. The data should have come from the teachers to determine what professional development they needed to perform better, that impacts directly student achievement. And so to hear that other people who evaluate them in some capacity provide feedback concerns me deeply. And we need to do better as a division. I didn't hear you say teachers completed a survey. So in my mind, that step was missed. And I'm just sharing, as a former teacher, don't hold me accountable if you didn't have my voice. I'm just saying. It makes no sense to me that we create, continue to create professional development, whatever the name is, without teacher input. And they have to be evaluated, and then they have no recourse. I just want us to do better. We'll advocate, listen, and stand for whatever you're asking us to do through the superintendent. But teachers have to be represented. That's it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just, I want to make sure, because I'm not sure if Dr. Neighbors clarified this. She spoke about the academic architects. These are teachers that are paid to help develop professional development, other curricular resources, our own teachers in every discipline. They are the ones who shaped these choice tracks. So of course, with input from others, but they were the leading voice in, in most of this work. So I did want to clarify, teachers were very much involved in the development and the articulation of what is needed.
Thank you for that clarification, but a survey wasn't done. And I know we have academic architects, and I like the, the, the ring to that. But I'm, I'm just saying, if, if a survey was not completed, compiled to say, this is, to find themes and common codes out of the information, because that's what surveys are created to do, is to provide codes and repeated, and out of those codes, repeated themes. What do we see reoccurring? I didn't hear that. I'm all for the academic architects. I really am. I support them. But how did they pull the information is what I'm asking. That, that's all I'm asking. But great, thank you for what you have done, what you all have worked to put together. But still, there is a missing link. And we just need to do better. That's all. And making sure that the teacher voices of, of her. We, we can't tell you how to do it. We're just asking you to find ways to make it happen. That, that's what I'm asking. Thank you. Ms. Burke, I thought I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Neighbors, thank you so very much, and to our faculty and staff persons and instructional team. Because often going into the buildings, I've seen teachers, especially the schools in the 7th District, disaggregate the data. They know every student by name. We brainstormed at length. I haven't seen, and then we also must be mindful that we are being held accountable for teaching SOLs listed in a certain manner. So there are so many means, rather than a survey, to determine what should be. So there's so many means rather than a survey to determine what should be professional development should be stated or in place. I did hear from several principals today regarding the wellness training and stating that it was great. In fact, I got a little jealous because I wanted to be there to see what they were doing. But Dr. Neighbors, Mr. Cameras, the instructional team, job well done. From what I've seen with the data thus far, it looks better than it did from the year before. And being mindful that no teacher has been left out, no instructional person has been left out in terms of what we also are held accountable for teaching and having done on our MOU for professional development. So I don't want to have any teacher to leave here thinking that we didn't value your input or that we did not hear what you wanted to have in place, but to always shop in the store. Saw as Stephen Covey states. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Ms. Renzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, is it possible that we could get a list of these academic architects? Is this something that's top secret information or can we get a list?
Of course.
Thank you.
I just want to close out by saying, thank you all so very much. This is, this is why we do the work that we do, but I also want us to be, be mindful that 10 academic architects is not conducive of the entire teacher population, but we're going in the right direction. So I do appreciate that. So we, we got some continued work to do to improve student outcomes and I'm excited about that. So thank you so very much. Mr. Cameras, you can continue with your transportation update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I noted earlier, we have made significant progress on our bus operator vacancies. As you can see, we also have a pretty healthy pool making its way through. So I am cautiously optimistic that we will be in a strong position in terms of our bus operators come day one. In addition, our enrollment team led by Mr. Hostetter has been doing some really excellent work this year to try to speed up the process of getting students enrolled. That's critical for transportation because we need to have all the enrollment information in before we can run all the routes. We are aiming towards releasing routes on August 22nd, so a week prior to school starting. And again, really appreciate the work of the transportation team and the enrollment team working very closely to make that happen.
Thank you. Any questions about the transportation, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, is this data just relating to regular drivers? And how many substitute drivers do we have?
I do not know the substitute driver number off the top of my head. I would have to pull that for you.
So therefore this is data for regular drivers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Door.
Thank you. Glad to see that route planning is gonna conclude a little bit earlier this year. And I would just request, I'm sure you guys are thinking about this, but having somewhere on the homepage, the routes and maybe even considering doing a robocall. I know there was a lot of families that were, felt a little in the dark last year about their routes. So making sure that they know it's available early would be, I'm sure, very welcome from all families.
Absolutely.
So listing the routes on the homepage, excuse me, and then doing a robocall?
Yeah, or some kind, yeah, definitely RPS director in some way to make sure that they know the info is available early.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. White?
Yes, Mr. Cameras, I have a question on transportation, dealing especially with after school activities for football, basketball, extracurriculum. Would this, would transportation be provided? I guess this, this year, because I do know that it did affect last year's season.
If I may, Madam Chair, yes, if we are able to fill all of our vacancies, we then have a tiering of additional types of activities that we want the transportation team to focus on. The very first item on that tiering is athletic events. So I do feel confident that if things move in this direction, yes, we will be providing transportation for all of those events.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Following up on the discussion about preschool. I understand at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the, the times and the length of day. And, you know, in the presentation, it noted that for transportation reasons, the start of the day could not be changed. And I was just wondering, I mean, I've asked, I know that the request has been made more than once to actually see the, to have a presentation specifically about the bus routes. And what would it look like if trans, like, you know, everything is about decisions and choices. Like, I would like to see something that shows how our transportation routes are set up. We talk a lot about equity and I, and I believe equity begins as soon as our students get on the bus. And so I think it would be really important to, to see, to see how it's set up, to see if there is any opportunity for making adjustments. You know, sometimes I feel that we talk in the abstract about bus schedules, but this is a very concrete thing. And I do think it would be valuable for the board and for the public to see the, the thinking that goes into that.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Cameras?
Yes, once we have all the routes generated, obviously they, they don't exist at this time, given that we're still waiting on enrollment. I'm happy to do a presentation on those and to dive into the timing implications of the routes and how one band, you know, preschool, elementary affects middle school and how middle school affects high school and so on. So happy to do that once all the routes are finalized.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Just want to make sure. All right, awesome. Mr. Cameras, I would like to take this opportunity. I did want to answer, excuse me, ask a question about our school counselors that also impact our student outcomes. Do you know the number of school counselors in our K through five academic program?
Not off the top of my head, ma'am.
I, I kind of figured that and, and that's okay. But can you provide to the board in your continuation of an academic update, the counselors that we have in all of our schools? And if there is a, a need for additional school counselors in any of the schools? And also list those schools that, that need school counselors? And in that presentation, I'm sure you would discuss the, the number, the state ratio, excuse me, in terms of what adequately presents a school counselor in our academic programs. And then lastly with that, and thank you for allowing me to repeat this, or not repeat this, but share this. The institute today was awesome. It was wonderful. Leading into a courageous conversation about not just mental health of our students, but also mental health for our staff. I would be curious to know the available resources or counselors that we have. So while we're talking about students, but also what do we have in place to provide mental support, i.e. school counselors for our staff?
Okay, absolutely. We can include that as well.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. You can move right into your next update, which is school nutritional services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As noted earlier, the key focus here is hiring of the cafeteria workers. Making progress, but still have a significant way to go. Also listed out some of the key contracts as a reminder to the board, we will not have a vended meal contract this year. We are going to a full in-house meal preparation using hub sites for some of our schools that don't have full kitchens. So you see here, these are just some of the contracts for kind of the basic ingredients. Some contracts are coming up on their end date, but they're already in procurement for renewal. And of course, pending price would come to the board for consideration. You'll see the kitchen hubs listed on the next slide and their status and how we're approaching transportation. Still some small items that we are getting in place for the group of schools on the bottom. But readiness to serve as a hub site is in place for all of these locations. Happy to take any questions.
Ms. White, then Ms. Renzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, I would like to know, since you said that we weren't going to have any more contracts like preferred foods. When will there be a taste testing? That's one of my questions. And looking at your hub sites, for second district, I have three schools, but I don't see what site hub would be beneficial to either one of my three schools. So how does that filter out into second district?
I would have to get the full feeder pattern list. So which hub serves which school? As a reminder, not every school uses a hub site. Most of our schools are able to produce the food in-house. So what I can do is, is get which schools are receiving food and I'll include that in the presentation going forward. As for your other question, there aren't necessarily taste tests per se, because we're not purchasing meals from a vendor. We're purchasing product and then the kitchens are, are developing the meals. We can certainly do taste tests of the meals that, and the menus that our food service team puts together at the local school level. And certainly we'll do that over the course of the year so that we can see which dishes are most valued by kids and which aren't and that sort of thing. But it's a little bit different from in the past when we were doing a taste test based on prepackaged meals. This would be based on what is actually being created in the kitchen. And so that would have to happen during the school year.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. White.
So the hubs, the kitchen hubs are for the schools that may not have like a stove or a working stove. That they can actually bring it to the other schools. But if you have a working stove, you can fix your own lunch and I guess after school meal. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And it could be stove, but it could also be space for sufficient refrigeration capacity to store food, things of that nature. So any school that either doesn't have the space or setup to be able to fully operate a made from scratch program on their own would be the recipient of food from a hub location.
I need to follow up on that. So Mr. Cameras, the contract that we had for preferred foods, that is already, has that been canceled? Or will it be soon to expire?
We no longer have the contract. We basically used it through the end of the school year and did not renew it.
Thank you. Ms. Renzi, then Mr. Young, and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually appreciate that explanation because I was looking at US Foods and I was like, okay, I'm not sure who that is. And I also read that the parent company, Elior, actually shuttered prepared meals. Like they are no longer even supporting that. And so it was, it confused me. I was like, okay, what's going on here? If they have shut down that, I guess it's a subsidiary company, then what are we doing and who is US Foods? So I appreciate that explanation and I'm happy to hear that we are going in-house. Will that provide us any cost saving ultimately?
I, I would have to look at the numbers to see, I mean, the, the entire food program is based on reimbursement. So it's a little bit different from like a traditional way we would approach a budget where we would say we have X number of dollars for the food program. Instead, it's based on how much participation we have and then the reimbursement we get from the federal government. In some ways, it's a good thing if it costs more because it means more kids are eating. But again, it's, it's paid for by the federal government. So there's, let me, let me dig into that a little bit more and be able to give you the best possible answer. I don't want to do it off the cuff.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then also how is SHAB being, the, the SHAB team being engaged in this at all? Or are they?
I, I don't believe they've been involved this summer. Folks have been away. But what I am very much hoping that they can do over the course of the years, participate in these kind of periodic taste tests that I was just mentioning, helping us continue to refine our menus so that we hit that sweet spot between nutritious and delicious. I know, speaking for my own two children, if they could have macaroni and cheese every single day, they would. But it's not going to make them turn into healthy human beings. So we got to kind of find that sweet spot. And obviously we have all the federal requirements about what we need to serve as well. So I would love for the SHAB to help us continue to iterate and refine our menus to hit that sweet spot.
Mr. Young, Ms. Burke, was your hand up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Ms. Rizian and us, presumably everybody up here really excited that we are going to, in lieu of the prepackaged meals, do everything in-house. So that's a welcome departure from beginning last year. My question perhaps isn't a question because it pertains to the same topic that I inquired about in regard to recruiting teachers. But for our next meeting on August the 15th, I hope that colleagues, Ms. Superintendent, we will revisit the COVID protocols relevant to volunteers in the building. Because it seems to me that we can really benefit particularly from folks who can assist, not per se in the kitchens. So I suspect some folks may be willing to help, but, but rather in, in the cafeterias and, and helping with, with caf, with cafeteria duties. That's always been something that I know a lot of my neighbors have been eager to do. And I suspect we can benefit from inviting them to again, return to our buildings. Thank you.
Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note, we did relax a lot of the volunteer restrictions in the spring. And going into next year, volunteers will be welcome in our schools.
Say it again, sir. I love it.
You don't have to say.
Volunteers will be welcome in our school.
One more time, one more time.
Volunteers will be welcome in our school.
I just wanted to see the hands on the air. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And Ms. Burke?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited about having persons on staff cooking the foods. That's, that's, to me, that should be as close to homemade as compared to what we eat often when we eat fast food. So I'm glad to see that the food will be fresh and cooked right there on site. What my, I have two questions. Number one, and if you don't have this now, the next meeting will be fine to respond to this. And I'm getting into the weeds a little bit, but how is the menu decided? Will each school have the same menu or will it be based upon what that manager and team decides? Also, will we have opportunities to have choices? For instance, will there every day be a salad? Will there every day be a choice for Asian food or Mexican food or will there be choices? So that, and then my last question is, with the 50 vacancies, and I do hope that number will be smaller, if maybe not down to a zero for our next meeting. Because I've had some neighbors, people in my neighborhood that called that said they received phone calls today on what to wear, when to report. And they're very excited to join RPS. So I'm glad that they did hear the call and were chosen to work. So my question number one is, who decides the menu? Number two, will it be consistent from school to school? If it's not, that's fine. And number three, will there be choices?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure I give you and the board accurate information on that. So if I may circle back with our nutrition team and then provide that information in our update at our next meeting. We can have much more detail on that. In addition, I'll note on the cafeteria worker vacancies. As you note, Mrs. Burke, this is the time of year when we begin to reach back out to see if folks are willing to come back. Because as you know, this is a position where folks come and then at the summertime, you know, leave the position, then come back. And so I do think we're going to begin to see that, that 50 fall pretty precipitously over the next couple of weeks. Certainly we'll provide a, a full update on that at our next meeting. Certainly, we'll provide a full update on that at our next meeting.
Follow up, if I may. I do hope, just as we do for our teachers, people are going to other counties. So whatever we're doing to be aggressive in keeping the people that we have, persons who retired from RPS that worked at for nutrition services have been picked up by the county like that. So I just want us to be mindful, just as we're looking for teachers, we need someone to feed our children too. So whatever we can do aggressively in the next couple of weeks to seal those persons that are interested and to keep those that we have, I look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I do want to thank the board. You may not recall that we proposed and you approved a pay increase for our cafeteria workers. And that has been very appreciated. I've spoken to a number of them who have been very, very grateful. And I think that has certainly helped. And again, I do think we'll see that number come down over the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Door.
Just to note, the SHAB was involved in the original decision around insourcing versus outsourcing. And they were involved in the procurement process as well. And my question is, now that we are insourcing our cafeteria meals, is there, I know that there's been from time to time local farmers and CSAs, et cetera, restaurants that have been interested in getting more fresh fruits and veggies to RPS? And I'm wondering if there's more of an opportunity to provide that to our kids now that we own the production?
The short answer is yes. Working out the details is always the challenge, but absolutely that is the direction we want to go is leveraging the great food community that we have here in Richmond and bringing that into our schools. As I've shared previously, I would love to be known for many wonderful things, RPS that is. And I'd like one of them to be our meals. I think we have an opportunity to really leverage all the incredible expertise we have already within the system in our nutrition workers. I mean, some of them are incredible, the meals that they put together. And to bring even more folks, get them involved in leveraging all the different restaurants and farmers and so on in the area.
Thank you. I believe a few months ago, we were at John Marshall High School. I want to recall that we were when one of our students from Georgewith High School, who was a student representative for that school board meeting. And to just remind us, she spoke her message in both her native language as well as in English. Shared with us that she would really like, in speaking with her peers. And it wasn't, and I just want to be clear, she stated it wasn't just her Hispanic peers. She also stated she spoke with the general student population that if we could have some meals considered that relate to their heritage. She didn't say it like that, but I think that's what she meant. She spoke a little bit about that. So where are we with that? Just curious because, you know, she made a valid point and she spoke directly to Equity. And she also stated the Dreams for RPS bullet that Equity was speaking to. So I was very impressed.
As was I. Again, let me, and this kind of relates a little bit to Mrs. Burke's question as well. Let me get further information on that and I will report back at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Cameras, are there potential partnerships that could be made with the Tech Center and Culinary Arts? Where, you know, providing meals are concerned or, you know, are there like potential internships in the future that could involve our culinary arts students?
Absolutely. Let me gather up a little bit more info on what they are already doing and possibly what more they could do.
Thank you. Very good discussion. I just want to share with you all, it's eight o'clock, as I share with you that I will do throughout the meeting. Next, we will have our Georgewith update and I'm going to ask Mr. Cameras just to go right into the Fox update as well. Even if we have questions about Georgewith, we'll just move right on into Fox. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to call up Ms. Fox to give us a brief update on both schools. You have the presentations. So just the highlights and any questions you may have.
Good evening. So for Georgewith, we are steadily chugging right along. We had a great Summer Fest last weekend that we issued the ballots out for the exterior elevations and provided options for folks to vote on that, along with the great support of the Office of Engagement. So we're still in the middle of programming. We're going to meet this week with our steering committee and also a community outreach committee to hone in on those selections so that we can present to you all at the August 15th meeting with the goal that we would have that finalized so we can present to the Urban Design Committee for their August 20th deadline so that they can review in September and we can kind of keep the momentum going. So that is the plan for the next school board meeting. On-site activity, they started the asbestos identification today. That will occur for the entire week this week. It's just identification. There's nothing else, nothing else happening there. Our early site work package, we are working with our engineer to get those drawings completed so we can submit to the city for permit to begin that work. And as a follow-up to Ms. Rizzi's question from the last board meeting about the CSX tract of land, we spoke at Summer Fest about this and also wanted to let the board know. The city is acquiring that tract of land that runs from West Over Hills to Hopkins Road. And the likelihood that would be completed, that acquisition would be completed by the end of summer. And we have met with them, I say we, that's RPS and the design firm, along with our civil engineer, have met with the city to discuss what a long-term plan for a shared use path and access would be with that CSX tract of land, along with our Parks and Rec space that's across Crutchfield. And then kind of what the implications would be for our existing GRTC bus stops and how things may need to shift with those and Dominion Power. So we are really into it and getting going and we're looking forward to some great updates. And then the next board meeting presenting you all with some really pretty pictures of the selections that we have so far. So I'll stop there for questions.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Fox. You have no idea how grateful I am that we are going to be addressing that CSX property finally. Does that also include that large pit of water that is back there? Do you know, I'm guessing since we're acquiring that property or the city is, they will address that.
Based on what their long-term plan is, they would have, they would have, yes, that they would have to do that. That's not something that RPS would do since we don't own that property. But we are working in conjunction with them to make sure that we're prioritizing the community around Georgewith and what we can safely do for that area.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Fox. Thank you. Congratulations to your team, by the way, specifically in regards to Fox and all the work that's being done there. My question pertains to restrooms and specifically at the new Georgewith. Only a few months ago, when teachers, in particular, students along with families requested of this board that we rezone the building that we're in today. A common refrain pertained to restrooms and not an adequate number of restrooms. Because the architectural engineering firm is the same, i.e. RRMM. My question relates to have we, and if we haven't yet, that's okay, I pray that we'll do this very soon. Have we had that conversation with RRMM? I evaluated those concerns, those complaints relevant to enough restrooms? And share with you in candor. I am unsure, this school board member is unsure, if those complaints relevant to adequate number of restrooms pertained more to there was an inadequate number of restrooms? Or perhaps if some of the restrooms in this building that should be accessible at any time during the day, because it's a bathroom, were locked during the day? Because frankly, that's a recurring problem or it has been in the past in some of our buildings. So maybe less of a question than a request or recommendation if my colleagues concur that because of the architectural engineering firm is the same, that we identify if those complaints pertinent to too few restrooms related to, there were too few restrooms? Or if instead it regarded an operating deficiency, i.e. some of those rooms were being locked up? Hope that was clear.
Yes, so as it relates to other schools and locking, I'm not sure. But for Georgewith, we are again going to meet this week to finalize our programming and what the space requirements are going to be. And then all of that is done based on calculations. We already have a very detailed spreadsheet for the requirements of the RPS ed specs, the VDOE. And then what is the requirement of Georgewith for their programming? And that's then going to be based on the number of students that are going to occupy the building and the formula for that. So we would certainly have enough bathrooms for the number of folks that are in the building. So we are taking that into account. And to your point, for some other issues that have come up, the parking, the parking count as well, that we're highly sensitive to that too. And then taking those calculations. And so it's, we will be happy to present those numbers to you when we finalize programming.
And I just recall one other element of that discussion, which candidly, perhaps I shouldn't be so blunt, but I will. That bothered me was how we were apparently having to escort a lot of our students here, middle school students to the restroom like they were in elementary school presumably because we experienced so much vandalism in the bathrooms, requiring us to adopt draconian measures. So my question, I'm just trying to identify how many, the concerns regarding, we heard it over and over again, how many restrooms? And if the variables that I just identified, i.e. because we experienced so much vandalism, students were having to literally be handheld down to the bathroom in block? And/or if there were bathrooms that were being locked because of vandalism? If those were, if those were the principal variables relevant to why we didn't have enough space? Or if it was just a design issue? So again, sorry, I recognize I'm probably repeating myself, but I just think it's really important to address now rather than a year or two years after the building has been erected.
Correct. And we have an opportunity to design bathrooms differently if we want to pursue that. And that's something that we can discuss this week with our steering committee and with the community engagement committee. But regardless of the design of the bathrooms, there will absolutely be enough toilet counts for the amount of people in the building.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Young, I think it's probably a little bit from column A and a little bit from column D. I think we need to make sure that we look over the bathroom layout, location, capacity, and make sure that we have all of the operational procedures in place to ensure that we don't have to engage in some of those draconian measures. So I think it's both. I think Ms. Fox can really work on the first one. The second one is more a school climate and culture issue, which we've talked about at great length vis-à-vis Georgewith and certainly need to continue to do so. So I think it's both and we'll certainly make sure that we have the right number, the right layout, make sure the school community is able to weigh in on that.
Thank you. Without seeing any other questions, we can move right into the Fox update.
Okay, so we are presenting tonight the first read of the design contract for Fox Elementary School. Again, we had six design firms that presented and responded to the emergency RFQ. They're listed in alphabetical order. Our selected design firm is Quinn Evans. So we are very excited to present that to you all for discussion. I didn't know how far you wanted me to go, so I was going to pause if you had questions. Okay, sorry.
I was just wondering where the actual contract is.
That, sorry.
We're happy to submit the contract for the board's review.
I mean, as a rule, I think we should be reviewing, we should have the actual contract.
Again, happy to do so.
Board members? Ms. Page?
Superintendent Cameras, question for you. Contracts, are all contracts listed on the website? Or is, you know, is there a particular threshold? Or is it all contracts are listed on the website?
I believe they are all listed on the website. I don't believe there's a threshold, but I would have to re-verify that.
Madam, I'm sorry, Ms. Page, I was just going to ask Madam Attorney if she can give us some, some information. You know, is it, when Ms. Page is asking threshold, I'm thinking monetary, like is it a certain amount? Is it 350,000, is it 400,000 or is no threshold? Do we have a policy that states that?
Your policy doesn't extend to what's posted online? And so I don't know the answer to the threshold question for the posting of contracts.
Okay.
You have the, your policy extends to the threshold for your approval of them. But the procurement office can, you know, at another time, provide you information about what's online and available.
Ms. Page?
Just a follow-up. I just would like, I was under the impression that all contracts are listed, right? Regardless of the amount? That's why I was questioning if a certain amount was posted versus all contracts. I mean, because that's been, that's been the case in the past unless something has changed. And I don't think so because the board has, you know, we have not had a discussion regarding that.
Sure, so, yes, ma'am, thank you. So we convert, the superintendent said that he will verify. And if it's not listed, we'll list it. Also provided to the school board members at the request of a school board member. We're just, you know, list it, give it to us, list it, give it to us. Mr. Cameras?
Yeah, I'm just looking on the website right now. I do believe it's every single contract. I'll re-verify it.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, did you have a follow-up?
I do, I do. So just for clarity, the question is not whether contracts are public. They are, there's a website. But our job as board members is to approve contracts. The contracts that are on the website that are public are contracts that we've approved. But in order for us to do our job with due diligence, I believe it is important that we have that contract and can review it with fidelity. And so, you know, this board adopted a food nutrition contract that did not meet the federal nutrition standards. That I believe the rental bus depot was another contract that this board recently reviewed. And so I just don't believe that we're able to do our jobs to the extent that we are really required to do by law without having the documentation in place. And this has, you know, so this has nothing to do with the contract on the table. So, but I guess I've made this statement many times before. And so I just want to make it clear today that unless we receive the contract at the meeting, I cannot vote in favor of a contract that I, that we have not reviewed. We've seen too many things fall through the cracks. This is our job. Thank you.
I have to agree. Even this is a first read, the contract should have been presented to us. It might have been on the website. We can tell a lot of our staff to go to the website to get stuff. Help us so we can help you all. That's critically important, that we have the documentation. Ms. Gibson is 100% correct. We have gone back and forth as a board identifying missteps, issues and challenges that we all have had to face as a governing teams from our constituencies that are not even in our own districts. So we need to do our due diligence, and we need to have that contract prior to the second read, or I am pretty much certain what's going to happen, we're going to extend it out. That's just knowing the governance team, that's knowing the board, and, and how we operate, the type of questions that we ask, and what to expect. So I appreciate that, appreciate the consideration and ensuring that we get that contract.
Sure, understood. Just as a reminder, this is an emergency RFQ in response. So I just wanted to be clear.
It is, it's an emergency, yes ma'am. But emergency doesn't defer us doing our due diligence, emergency or not.
I don't, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
I appreciate that.
We can get you whatever you need.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to, I do want to, I do want to take a moment to say thank you. I voted against RF, I think it was the only person to vote against the RFQ process. But, you know, we spent five and a half million dollars a few years ago, or thereabout, for design services for three buildings. But you've proposed essentially 1.6 million. My point is to say that, I recognize that this is a renovation in lieu of a brand-new build, so it's apples to oranges. But that aside, if I'm being intellectually honest, as I always try to be, this is a significant cost savings vis a vis what we procured via RRMM a few years ago for three new buildings, including the one that we're here in today. So notwithstanding any of my concerns or reservations that my colleagues just spoke to, but I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. And 1.6 million, again, those apples to oranges, it's a renovation in lieu of a, of, of a new build is significant, significant cost savings via what we're either going to spend at George With, or what, what we spent on the last round of schools, including this one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yang. Continue, thank, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to talk about Clark Springs. I'm not sure if you finished my Fox yet.
If we're finished with the Quinn Evans portion, I can just move on to what we're doing currently. So we still have the contractor cleaning up debris. They have moved into the auditorium area and they're cleaning that. And then we'll move on to the remaining second-floor classroom wing. And then we'll get into finishing the stabilization permit that we have with the city. And that means wall bracings around those vulnerable areas. So we're continuing to clean out debris, and then we'll start the wall, wall bracing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Fox. Doing a good job at Fox Elementary, well, Fox Elementary. And thank you for also attending the advisory committee and giving us some good updates and collaborating with the actual community as well as parents, and keeping everybody abreast of what is going on in Fox. But my question is now for Clark Springs, because I'm a little very disappointed on what is going on in Clark Springs. I know the trailers, we've been through this, I guess since April. And now I'm hearing that the trailers will be there in September the 17th. I'm not sure if that is a tentative date. I saw it in one of these flyers. But my question would be is, because I have a whole fourth-grade team there that utilized trailers as classrooms. And I'm not sure, because this was given to the parents as assurance, the teachers, the parents and the communities, that when they get there, this classroom, they would have trailers there. And I know, I think Mr. Kamras said the permits had already came through. And I have several questions. Has the permits been applied for the temporary electrical services? Because it doesn't look like nothing has been prepped on the site right now. And I know that the electrical would take a little while. And my other question would be, we said that we was going to have carpet in the gym. They would come with new carpet, that hasn't been done. Swings and basketball courts, that hasn't been done. Everything that was promised or made assurance to these families and teachers, that hasn't been done. And school is getting ready to start in a couple of days, 28 days. And I'm not sure about the time limit that we received here on this PowerPoint slide, August 28, because there's a lot of other projects that I'm seeing at one time. How are we going to get all of this done for Clark Springs? Because this was actually almost promised to them in every meeting. Every meeting that we had, community meeting, these things were said and they would be up and running. And none of them are running. So I'm a little disappointed to know that today, the roof just started, Mr. Kamras said, because Friday, it was just equipment sitting out there when I drove past. I didn't see anybody even on the roof. And we know that it leaks, and we look at the weather, everything is rain. So I'm very concerned about Clark Springs and the teachers returning back and the students with the same issues that they left with.
Thank you, Mr. Kamras?
Thank you, first, Ms. Fox, thank you. Ms. Fox does not handle Clark Springs, as that's really a, a maintenance project run through our maintenance department. Mrs. White, I, I will say this, we are certainly trying to meet every deadline that, that we were hoping to achieve. I do believe, I, I tried to be clear even last spring, that we were going to do our very best to achieve all those things. But again, given the nature of the construction industry, things are taking longer than we would all like. The, the roof does appear to be on track to be completed prior to students returning. And I do believe that is the most critical element. That's number one. The, the trailers should be arriving on-site by the second week of August. The challenge is the work that needs to be done for all of the electrical plumbing and so on, the hookups. That is taking longer to schedule, just given a shortage of contracting capacity. It is likely to be ready at some point in September. I've already communicated this to Principal Jacobs, and so the staff will utilize the spaces that they had last year during the spring for the first couple of weeks of school. And then once the trailers are ready, they can go ahead and move into those spaces. The rug is not going to be ready for the first day. Again, just given challenges with supply chains and contractor capacity, that's just going to take a little bit longer. So we'll have, I, I'm happy to do a fuller update on Clark Springs at our next meeting. I'm sorry, we just focused on the, the Fox piece, given the, the important contract that we wanted to bring forward. But happy to, to provide a fuller update at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kamras. Mr. Yang?
Just real briefly, do we have any additional information in regards to insurance, VK, V Corp for the Fox building? And, and what we may anticipate relevant to revenue?
Not yet, but certainly when we do, I'll brief the board. And as these things usually go, as, as you can imagine, and insurance companies, by nature of their business model, like to pay as little as they possibly can, and clients like to get as much as they possibly can. So I'm sure there'll be a negotiation period. But once we have a sense of where things stand, I will of course brief the board and determine next steps.
Thank you, just checking behind me to make sure we're okay. All right, thank you for that update, Ms. Fox. Next, if there are any other questions, it is 8:25. I promise I would continue to remind us of the time. Next, we're going into board actions, receive for action, continuing services with the Council of Great City Schools. Board members, at the last meeting, it was in your packet, the information provided by Council of the Great City Schools, a contract for professional, professional services, and assisting with the district governance team to include the superintendent and the nine school board members, that makes up a governance team. Tonight, I would like for us as a board to decide if we're going to continue with the services, because I didn't receive any questions. I don't know if Mr. Kamras received questions since the last board meeting. He's shaking his head, no, he did not. So I would like for us as a board to decide tonight, your pleasure, if you want to continue with the services with the Council of the Great City Schools or not. So entertain questions as, as best as I can. And also I provided the information to board members that was provided to me from our facilitator. So we'll take questions, Ms. Door?
Thank you, I did, I did send a couple of questions, but it might have gotten buried in my email. I had three questions. One, how many sessions does this get us? Does this contract allow for us to have? Two, the leadership train, initial leadership training? I was wondering if that was school board leadership, the superintendent, the chair? And then three, how is the contract paid? Is it annual, monthly? And if we don't, we decide to cancel halfway through, can we do that?
Thank you, because I'm getting those questions tonight, of course, I will have not been, they're not sent to Dr. Santos, so I can send those.
Yeah, I sent it to you last Monday, July 18. I'll bump it to you.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
What I received was, yeah, July the 18th, Ms. Door, hold on. I don't want to say I didn't. I'm sorry, yes, you did, I have it right here.
Yeah.
I do have a response to your bullet number two that I can answer now. The initial leadership training, because we're, we're a governance team, would be for all of us. The Count, the Council of Great City Schools, and this with, with their council and with other school divisions, they have ongoing weekly leadership meetings with the chair and the superintendent of every division that is a part of their council. Okay, that's already, that comes with us being a member of the council. These leadership trainings are, and I'm explaining it to you, the way he explained it to me, was that each individual school board member would receive that one-on-one, individual, self-check, self, like, I wouldn't be a part of your, your individual training. You would be a part of mine. It would be individual, how can I strengthen myself as a school board member as a part of a governance team? So I hope that answered your question. And I will apologize, Mr. Kamras and I did have, well, at least I had it on my agenda, to discuss with him where we could possibly fund this from. And then I just felt like the other things that board members asked took precedent. So I didn't follow up with him about that. And then the sessions, this, this would be a two-year commitment. So we would get, I don't, I wouldn't put a number to the sessions, because maybe I need 15. Maybe you need, need six. It just depends on what, what that individual, like, like a health plan. Yep, so I hope that, that answered your questions. Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I thank the Chair for, for all of her work relevant to scheduling Council of Great City Schools a month or two months ago for our retreat. And, and I'm really grateful to the Council of Great City Schools in particular in 2018. In fact, one of the superintendent's very first initiatives in concert with this board related to an audit of all of our operations, an audit that I know everyone has spent a lot of time reviewing, and was very most instructive in regard to opportunities for improvement. So thank you, Council of Great City Schools. Now with that out of the way, I have to share, and my colleagues along the superintendent heard this at Huguenot for the retreat facilitated by the Council of Great City Schools, but I was most disappointed, disheartened to hear, frankly, the same kind of council recommendations, advice that we so regularly receive from the folks in Charlottesville, i.e. from the SBA. And I will characterize said council or advice as as sit down and shut, shut up. And that's not why this school board member, member ran for office either in 2016 or again for reelection in 2020. I believe in democratically elected school board that is most passionate, zealous as it relates to advocating for the interest, perspective, worldview, objectives, goals of their respective constituents. And I could only infer from the retreat, the workshop, only a month or two months ago, facilitated by Council of Great City Schools, that they have a very, very different approach to the role of a school board member. And I think that's really unfortunate. Again, notwithstanding the outstanding, the terrific work they did on the, the audit now four years ago. So I would invite my colleagues, and, and thank you, Madam Chair. She was really gracious, and in a preceding phone call, we had this conversation. And she was patient with me then, as you all are now. So I respectfully would request that my colleagues not approve any contractual services relevant to what we're discussing this evening with Council, Council of Great City Schools. Perhaps there's another organization under opportunity, but, but I can't support a group that, that articulated the kind of messaging that I heard then. And frankly, the same kind of messaging here from Virginia School Board Association, which I think also is out of step with persons who are interested in a democratically elected school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renzi, and then Ms. Door?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for what it's worth. I found this session helpful. I appreciated the opportunity to have honest discussions with my colleagues. I thought it was important that we spent time talking about how we could set guardrails on our meetings and stay more focused on student achievement. Was it perfect? No. But I really felt that I had a stronger understanding of how to best interact with my colleagues, best understand them, and to best move forward as a board as a result of our training.
Thank you, Ms. Door?
Thank you, Dr. Hm, I think it's really great that there's some flexibility in terms of meetings and who needs, kind of, we get a customized work plan, that's great for me to see. And I actually just answered my own question, the one that I did not read this part of the contract, but it does say that either party may terminate this contract without cause prior to 30 days. So I think I'm satisfied. I agree with Ms. Renzi, and so I make a motion to continue the contract with Council of Great City Schools.
Thank you, and I also want to point out that because of the amount, I did meet with Ms. Lilly, because I wanted some legal understanding with the amount in it. And I couldn't remember what amount we had in our policy that didn't require us to go through procurement. So she did share with me that we will have to go through procurement with this process. For procedural purposes, Ms. Lilly, can the motion still continue? Or we have to go through the procurement process first?
I think that if you would like to phrase a motion that you would, that if the board is interested in continuing with the types of services that the Council of Great City Schools offers, board development, governance training, that type of thing, and then, you know, direct, or ask the procurement office to review the necessary methods in which they can get those services.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ms. Door?
I'm happy to. I'm happy to amend my motion. So I motion to continue with the board governance work similar to what was outlined in the Council and Great City Schools contract, contingent on a review by procurement on the best way to move forward.
Thank you. It was moved by Ms. Door to continue ongoing governance training as outlined by the by Council of Great City Schools that was highlighted during our training with the assistance of the, I know assistance was not your word, but with the with the direction of the procurement office. And it was seconded by Ms. Page. Any other discussion? Ms. Gibson, I think, or Ms. White? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm voting no on this matter. And I have to be frank, I was incredibly disappointed with the findings that the Council of Great City Schools shared with the board. You know, the discussion that I had with with the team did not seem reflected in any of the findings that they shared. But most importantly, I think the headline, as it were, that came from those interviews was a was a chart that spoke to student achievement and how much the board is talking about student achievement. And I believe, you know, that it was kind of showing, I don't know, less than 20% or maybe even 10% of our discussions being about student achievement. And that 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 highlighted a, that data point highlighted a failure for the board. And, you know, the notion that the school board and that school boards are dysfunctional, it's something that's been repeated time and time again. I've said it before, I think particularly for this board, which is a majority black, majority female board. Frankly, I find it both sexist and racist that the board is disparaged in that way. We were voted in by the people. So but getting back to the notion that the board has not been discussing student achievement, and I believe the gentleman watched our meetings between January and May. You know, we had a school built burned down. And I believe very strongly that having facilities that are functional is 100% about student achievement. We discussed a school lunch contract that failed to meet guidelines. And student nutrition is about student achievement. We discussed the possibility of 70 staff members who were told that they were laid off while today we're talking about teacher retention rates. And I believe very strongly that teacher retention is about student achievement. Transportation is about student achievement. You know, I mean, the list goes on and on. We talked about our budget. And if there's anything that this board does that relates the most directly to student achievement, it is our budget and how we allocate resources. So so I am voting against this. I agree. I was impressed with the audit that they did with our financial work. I believe many of those recommendations are still very valid, and I'd like to see that move forward. But, you know, we don't talk about the failures in Congress because, you know, of how they get along with each other. I don't think anybody believes that if they were to do some retreats and some trust falls, that things would be better. And I personally find that notion somewhat misguided. And so I am going to be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to echo that I would not be voting for this. It was great. It was an enjoyable weekend with everyone. But I believe that we were elected, elected officials, and all of us have different personalities. And we should be able to agree and disagree. But the main thing that we should be able to do is respect each other. And it showed me, I was impressed because we had a person there who actually brought out some things from different individuals. And I saw how everyone could actually come together if they actually talked to each other. And it all boiled down to me as respect. But I cannot make a commitment that long period of time for this. And I would enjoy the money that we're spending for this. We need to put it in the classrooms or give it to our support staff. We had some staff right here tonight. They should be getting this money. As a board, we should be just be able to respect each other and do our jobs that we're elected for.
Thank you, Ms. White. Not to prolong the conversation, all of these things that everyone has mentioned this evening on this board is true. I'm sorry. Can I, is it okay by finishing then? I want to, I don't want to lose my thought. Thank you. Everything that the board members have mentioned tonight is true. For me, as an individual board member, I want to be able to find ways that we can continue to focus on the main thing, which is the main thing, and that is our children. Ms. White spoke to respect. That is absolutely accurate. And you demonstrate that by doing, and I've said this publicly, I've said it to board members individually, self-checking. And I want to continue to self-check because you can see growth in board members or your governance team to include your superintendent. Let's not forget our superintendent, who is a part of this governance team, by the way we respond in crises. It's all in the behavior. And so that's what I wanted to share. I will be voting yes because I see value in the continued training ongoing as a governance team. But I want to publicly say I respect all the comments that were given this evening, good, bad, or indifferent, because there is some truth in individuality. So Ms. Page, thank you for letting me go before you. Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead.
Thank you. I am in support of continuing the services with the Council of Great City Schools for this reason. I thought the retreat, the information that was shared was very valuable. And but it's my hope, yes, this this is definitely is beneficial to the board. But my hope is if we continue with these services, the work that we put in, as well as the work that the facilitators put in, is not done in vain. I see this as professional development for us as individual board members. And I will hope if this passes, that all nine of us would attend because that wasn't the case at the retreat. As a board member, it's our responsibility, and I get it, yes, we are elected officials. But it's always wrong to learn, to grow. And I feel like this is an opportunity for this board to continue to operate as a governance team and to continue to grow. Because the decisions that we make impact the children that we serve. So I see this as an opportunity, professional development, and an opportunity for us to continue to grow, all nine members, as well as the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. We're going to go back to Ms. White. And then we're going to wrap this up because it is, excuse me, 8:44.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. Based on the actual discussion that some of our board members have just stated, if there are not nine members there, why are we spending money on a handful of members? If they are not committing their thefts tonight to this, why would we be spending money for the entire board to come? That much, that amount of money?
Thank you, Ms. White. It was confirmed by Dr. Santos that the Council of Great City Schools is not mandating all nine board members to pass the motion or agree or be in attendance. They will work with those individual board members who choose to be, and I want to make sure that I am politically correct in stating this, want to continue the services if they so desire. I hope that answered your question. Yes, ma'am.
So therefore, the amount of money that it costs, it will still be the same regardless of what the number? Is that what you're saying?
That is my understanding. But we can also get clarity through that if it's not my understanding through the procurement process, through the questioning and answer of the procurement process.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the robust conversation, school board colleagues. We have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Motion passes.
Thank you. So we will move in the direction of having procurement do, complete their work. Thank you. Next, board colleagues, receive for action execution of internal audit of our SRF funding. Our school board auditor is here. Come on down. Thank you so much.
So good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yep, there we go. Can you make it larger? So the slide I'm presenting tonight pretty much speaks to some of the questions that were had last week or the last meeting we had regarding the SRF fund audit or internal audit of SRF funds. First, I would like to speak to the current audit work or current review work that goes on for all of the grants right now for Richmond Public Schools. So for the most part, Virginia Department of Education reviews all of the grants prior to us being approved to spend. And then they review them again once we've spent and request reimbursement. Okay, so that's two different parts. So phase one, before we we get approved, before we we can go spend. And then when we go to reimbursement, we then we then get another review to make sure our funds are reimbursable.
So they don't stop in audit?
No, they don't necessarily stop audit. It's just, it's a continuous review. The next piece is the bigger part, is the federal funds. All of them go through what's called a single audit. That is different from the annual financial report or the AFRA or the CAFRA or AFRA. We want to say the right name. It's the AFRA. The the single audit is an audit of our internal controls and compliance with federal guidelines for all of our federal funds that we receive. Everybody has to go through that if you're not a part of a federal government agency. So because we're not necessarily the federal government, we have to go through a single audit. That is performed in conjunction with the AFRA review by Cherry Becker, who's our external auditor. Okay? Now, the SRF fund audit alone will cover just the SRF fund for the most part. If we would, if you all were to move forward with this audit. The objectives of the audit, and this is very high level, which you see in that that box call objectives pretty much. But we're going to look at the funding, the compliance, the controls, yes, the effectiveness and the efficiencies. Those things include, and I'm just, just to include, reimbursable reimbursements, the accuracy of the the charges or the expenditures, as well as the POs, some of the things in the process to make sure that those those things are in compliance from A to Z and to walk through the process steps, if that makes sense. Then the next piece here is the audit scope. So basically, the timeframe we would look at. And for what I've chosen, this can, this can change by, you know, before we get to the actual audit. But this is just a perspective. From March 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2021. If, if, again, this is still in the 2022 fiscal period. So once we cross over into January, they will be looking at that. I'm sure Cherry Becker will look at that during our single audit review. And then, again, the the organizational or the operational department that's impacted directly here is operations. And then to be more specific, is finance, grants management, and procurement, at least at the front of it all. We could get down into facilities and asking for certain things there and really digging a deep dive into the whole process. But finance, grants management, and procurement would be your starting points and your main points of contact here from our perspective in internal audit. Because once we break down the funds, then we'll start, we may have to get into the facilities or transportation groups or organizations of that, that, that such. And now budget of hours, I think that's the bigger piece that we were talking about. So between the two of us, we have allotted 1,000 hours. So that's just about half of what we have to work with in a year. So that's about 500,000 hours apiece. And in the major phase here, and what we try to do in audit, in the audit world, is our planning phase. Because if we plan this out right, then we can, we probably can really get through it when it gets to the testing phases. And us being on the ground and pulling invoices and reviewing invoices, things of that nature. All in all, what about 1,000 hours? You're looking at approximately six months or so. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Page and then Ms. White?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Question. So this is, this audit is supposed to be performed by our external auditor?
No.
No, ma'am.
No.
Internal.
No. So so the internal, our internal, the request from the board was for the internal auditing. So let's step back. There was an original request about two meetings ago for an external audit of the government in the SRF fund. That's what you, if that's what you're referring to. We're now looking at bringing it in-house for the internal audit team to do it since we're, since that would be an expense that we would have to cover pretty much. By having the internals do it, we would add that to the FY '23 audit work plan as one of our bigger audits, just like we did the Chromebook audit. And then we would have to prioritize accordingly after to make sure we're getting the work done.
So a follow-up question. So originally, I had asked the question. This audit, I'm still concerned, why did not, why didn't it come through the finance audit committee to be properly vetted? Because you're just saying that you will be performing the audit, correct? So I was in a discussion from, with the finance audit committee and then bring a recommendation should have been brought for, to the board to, you know, to have the discussion that we'll have at night.
Are you asking me for that answer? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Page. If we go back to our notes or minutes from our March, this was during the budget, early on budget discussions when board member Ms. Gibson discussed about having a audit of the budget book which to include also the funds in that, which included our SRF funds, federal funds. In that meeting, it was stated what, it was asked of the board, what is it that we want as soon as possible? So the board, and I believe it was a motion, to have the auditor complete an audit of our budget book, which that was done in phases. And so this is one of those discussions that came out of those meetings, several meetings. So it wasn't just discussed in June. It goes back to our second meeting in March, which was continued in April. Just like I've rementioned that we needed to complete the Just like I've re-mentioned that we needed to complete the, the legal services or the RFP for legal services, because that was overdue. We were moving into several months out after that request was made with the budget book audit.
Follow-up.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember all of that, but my concern is we have standing committees, the finance audit, and the purpose of the finance audit committee, it just seems like we didn't follow the process that we have set in place. I, I don't have any issue with doing the work. My concern is the process. Did this governance team follow the process that we have in place?
We followed the same process that the will of the board put forth when we agreed, when the will of the board agreed to do the audit with the budget book. This is the same process. I didn't, I'm not operating, having a discussion out of what we did back in, I want to say, the April vote, when the motion was put on the table. Because that discussion was not taken to the finance committee. That was a motion that was brought by a board member. We had discussion. It rolled over to the next meeting and we, it was a motion on the table. We voted and it passed. No one mentioned, yes, ma'am, no one mentioned that they wanted it or should and why wasn't it going through the finance audit committee? And to be very honest, that should have been a discussion from someone on the committee if, if it was really that much of a concern between when the budget book audit started till the duration of the school year, but that didn't happen. So I, I just followed the same process that this board, that this governance body laid out. It wasn't, I didn't operate any, in any other space that we haven't been operating in. Ms. Renzi?
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Renzi?
You're done, Ms. Page?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I kind of see this as analogous, analogous to what we're doing with Arthur Ashe, right? We're having that discussion outside of the vacant property committee, right? Because it is the will of the board to have that discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I kind of see this as the same type of situation where the will of the board kind of supersedes what happens in the committee.
That is correct.
No, I am on the committee and have an interest in this. I, I just kind of see that as an analogy. I mean, if we can do it in one case, we can do it in all.
Yes, ma'am, and that's why I was, I'm in agreement with you. And that's why I said I would, I'm moving in the same space. Nothing has changed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for the presentation. And I'm glad that you did bring up Cherry Becker and Holland. Because I know when we had this discussion at the last board meeting, we was talking about external first, then we was talking about internal, and we was talking about it would cost extra fees. But now I, I do have actual, the contract, so I know it doesn't expire until 2023. So there shouldn't be any extra fees when we already have them as procurement. Then for procurement, we already paying them. So how soon would their audit be before the intern, the external be before the internal? Can we get an external prior to, before the internal audit? From Cherry Becker and Holland?
I think, Mr. Pa, if I may, Mr. Parker heard the conversation from the board, wanted to stay within internal. And so I didn't, in my conversation with him, didn't ask him to go and pull that data.
No, I pulled it myself.
She's got the contract.
I pulled it myself. So I know that we do have a contract with Cherry Becker and Holland. That's our external auditor services. And it started in 2019 and it doesn't expire to 2023. So what extra funds would we have to pay them if we were doing an external audit?
Ms. Dorr, you want to ask a question or?
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that the Cherry Becker con, contract is for the annual budget book audit that we provide to the VDOE as part of our board contract. So if we were to initiate an additional audit, it would cost incremental dollars. It wouldn't be under this contract. And I think last, we, last meeting, Ms. Lilly confirmed that we would likely have to go through procurement. So Cherry Becker might not be the provider, or maybe the provider, but it would be incremental cost to the existing procurement contract, which is why.
She said, shouldn't say. I wasn't here, but that, that sounds reasonable. No, that sounds reasonable as, as the response, because all to what you're saying, the contract probably does not include this within the scope. The current contract probably does not include this type of audit within its scope. So you would have to, depending on the cost of what you willing to out, you know, put out for that, go through procurement again.
Sorry, Ms. Lilly. I, I would be, I would be amenable to exploring an act, the reason why I asked Mr. Parker to come up with an option for internals is because we obviously have an internal team trying to save money. Obviously, if there's the board, the will of the board feels like it should, it should be done quicker than six months, then I think that's fine. We can initiate getting an external cost analysis. I personally am against that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, continue.
Keep going, keep going.
I personally am against that because knowing what our Cherry Becker con, contract is right now, and I don't think they will actually be any quicker than Mr. Parker, so.
So, so to answer your question, Mrs. White, because you asked the whole, you got a whole lot of responses, right? So, so every, all of those responses are pretty accurate, though, but what your specific answer is, does Cherry Becker do this for us now? They do a portion of this now. The single audit handles Title I, any grants we get, any federal funding we get. And then, and also it would include the ester as well, but it's only a portion of the ester, right? This particular internal audit would be looking at the ester funding alone by itself, without looking at all the rest of the federal grants. Can we do it faster than Cherry Becker? I can't tell you we're going to be able to do it faster than Cherry Becker, because they have a team of people that come in here and they, they, you know, they have a whole program they've run to do it from that standpoint. Also, with that being said, Cherry Becker, they, they're already working on a, you know, they're working on a single audit right now for FY, I believe, I want to say today I checked, maybe 21, to get that all submitted, and then they're going to be in here for 22 real soon through the end of next year. So it will all be somewhat simultaneously and parallel with what they're doing, but we would be different from them. Like, we wouldn't be working with them, not that I know of right now. We wouldn't be working with them or alongside them, but we would be asking those, you know, it, it would be pretty much the same group of people, though, that we're getting the audit information from.
Follow-up. My follow-up question would be, if you're doing the audit internal, would you be doing it when the earth ester funds deplete? Or would you be doing it at the fiscal year, the end of the fiscal year or calendar year, starting off in January?
So I would start it, so the scope is what you see right there for March, March 1st to 20th, March 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2021. That would be my scope period. I would be, we would be reviewing an internal audit. We wouldn't wait till, let's say, the end of a calendar period or a fiscal period. We would start right at the beginning of probably which, which was deemed COVID at that point. Does that make sense? So we would go from depth, particular space and time and look at those, those. So it wouldn't be necessarily fiscal year 21, 22. It would cross over into fiscal periods at that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So board members, thank you. This was really good conversation clarity. I think some clear, some things became clear. Thank you all for your comments. Do we have a motion to execute an internal audit with our auditing team? Mr. Young?
So moved.
It was moved by Mr. Young to.
Second.
And it was seconded by Ms. White to, I like this, let's go, to have our school board auditor complete an internal audit of our ester funding. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones? Motion passes.
Very good. Next, we have for action, our personnel actions due first before we go. Do we have any, I'm sorry, what did I, I'm sorry, thank you. Before that, our preschool schedule update. Thank you, Mr. Camus. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Puberty. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are presenting for action the adjustment to the preschool schedule as it is outlined in the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
There aren't any questions. I will entertain a motion. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the preschool schedule update as listed on our board action item.
It was, thank you. It was moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Page to accept the revised preschool schedule presented by the superintendent. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does the proposed schedule include both the preschool centers and the preschool programs that exist inside the existing or elementary schools?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones? Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Camus, present, presentation of the personnel actions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hudesko is going to present that.
Thank you. Ms. Hadesco?
Good evening. This evening, we bring before you the nomination of 129 employees, the change of contract of 55 employees, the resignation of 45 employees, the retirement of three employees, the termination of one employee, and the unfortunate passing of one employee.
Any questions, board members? Ms. White?
I have a question, but it's, I'll close.
Thank you. Ms. Hadesco, you will go first and close, okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any board travel and district activity requests from board members?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have three from Ms. Rizzi. One is permission to attend the VSBA budget training in October of 2020 in the amount of $265.62. District Activity Funds request for Great Minds RBA Chess Club in the amount of $200, and District Activity Funds request for Swansboro Elementary School Enrollment Banner in the amount of $125.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the requests. Do I have a motion? Ms. Burke?
I move that we accept. The request is listed.
Thank you. It was, it was moved by Ms. Burke to accept the request as presented, and it was seconded by Ms. White. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones? Motion passes.
Thank you. School board colleagues, we're going to defer to our next meeting, 4.06, at the request of the superintendent. So we are going to receive the budget transfers for 4.07. We are going to defer 4.06 to our next meeting at the request of the superintendent.
Good evening. This evening, we bring before you a small budget transfer, but as you know, we bring all budget transfers over $10,000. This is a movement within the early childhood education line of $33,500 to support more classroom observation materials, participation and conferences and the purchase of technology. So you'll just see the moves of different lines.
Thank you. Seeing that we don't have any questions, may I have a motion to receive the budget transfers?
I move that we receive the budget transfers as presented.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Rizzi to receive the budget transfers over $10,000. It was seconded by Ms. White. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dorr?
Yeah.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yeah.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Motion passes.
Thank you. Board members, remember, we amended the agenda to add board business to discuss, to discuss Arthur Ashe. I can begin that discussion, if you like, with an update that I have, which has to be discussed and closed. I can begin the conversation by sharing with board members the information that I have to present after consulting with an attorney, it, that, that I called and just asked to err on the side of caution, what was shared with me to discuss it and close, and I'm going to move in that caution. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it okay, then, if this was the agenda item I requested, if, if, I presume there's any other discussion, should I just begin?
Sure.
Yes. So, you know, with, with all due respect to our, our legal counsel and my board colleagues, I, I do have considerable concern with how this Arthur Ashe matter has been addressed thus far. We were alerted in a closed session about a conflict of interest, and I do not believe we were within the guidelines of laws regarding public session in that discussion. The, our law firm has informed us that they have a conflict of interest to represent the board on matters related to the city, and this is of public interest. And so I, I just find that, I was very concerned about the discussion. I voted that, at that meeting, that, that I didn't believe that the discussion should have been enclosed. I found it concerning that our legal counsel advised us to have that conversation enclosed. And I, you know, basically, we have a piece of property that the city is, is looking to market and sell to developers, and, and we are now being told that we don't have legal counsel. This is harming our ability to move forward with any type of legal action, should we decided to pursue it. And I find it, I just find it incredibly concerning if there was such a conflict. This body has been in kind of back and forth with the city for some time, including, we all remember, you know, with, with, with George With. So to be now told that our legal counsel has a conflict of, of interest, it just seems, it seems very late in the game to be told. So I, I am putting this forward publicly, because I believe it is, it is our duty to have this discussion publicly. At this stage, we're not talking about whatever our, any type of legal action specifically, but rather that, as I understand it, we simply do not have legal representation. And so if there is a discussion about bringing other legal representation on board, I believe that that must be done in open session. Thank you.
Thank you. I was advised, and I want to share this with the public and those who are here, that any information that pertains to legal matters, anything that pertains to personnel, are to discuss in executive session. And because this is a potential legal matter, I have also consulted with, and, and I will publicly say this, because I have been so deeply concerned, if I was doing the right thing, I just called a dear sorority sister who has been, and who has been an attorney for a number of years, over 20 years. And the message to me was this, always side on the air of caution. And that's what I am doing. I do not have the legal background to represent or to share or tell the board that, whatever direction to take. That is a board discussion. There are components of next steps that we do discuss in open. But for me, when I am told that anything that deals with legal or person- But for me, when I am told that anything that deals with legal or personnel, that those items are to be discussed in clothes. And so that's what I have shared with the board. All the information that I have pertaining to Arthur Ashe, speaking with council president several times, speaking with my counsel, Lacyon, Ellen Robertson, have been discussed in open, that has not been discussed in clothes. I do not move as chair unless the will of the board, when it's pertaining to the school board business, unless the will of the board directs me to do so. And so that's, that's all I have to say about that, for those who are watching and those who are here. Thank you. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I have a question for Mr. Cameras, I'm not sure, unless you can answer it, Madam Chair. I just find it concerning that a building that we do not own, we have been paying utilities on. Have this action been discontinued, or is it still in our budget? Were we still paying? And will we be reimbursed for those actions?
Madam Chair, thank you. As long as I have been superintendent, RPS has paid utilities for the Ashe Center. I don't want to wade into the legal questions, I defer to the board, and if the board would like to seek reimbursement for that, again, I defer to the board on that.
Ms. White, and then Ms. Rizzi, and I just would remind us, it's 9:17, and we still have to go into clothes.
A follow up. Madam Chair, is there any way that you can ask that question to whatever legal? I know we can't ask our legal staff here, but just to get a clarification of that.
I can get any clarification that the board seeks me to receive. But what I stated earlier, legal has to be discussed and closed. I don't, I don't know what else to say, other than. Yes. Ms. Rizzi, then Mr. Young.
Yep.
Ms. Rizzi?
You know, I just want to say in general that, you know, I'm extremely disappointed that we're even having to have this discussion. Our system needs money, our children need the money. I think it's really unfortunate that this is even a thing at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, duly noted. I have also shared that. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not gonna pretend to do this little job, but I do have the relevant code or statute section, if you want me to read, and I'm unsure it'll provide any more clarity, or if it'll just continue the debate, but perhaps it is relevant for me just to recite it.
Can you give me the code?
Yes, ma'am. Let me scroll back up to the top. It's section 2.2-3711, and specifically subsection seven and eight, read. Again, unsure that this will illuminate the conversation, or perhaps something else, but it reads consultation with legal counsel and brief, this pertains to closed session. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because of an attorney representing the public body as an attendance or as consultant on a matter. And subsection eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing, again, nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is an attendance or a consultant on a matter.
So what I summarize that as, if it's going to hinder the school board posture, legal posture, it should be discussed and closed. That's how I'm summarizing this. And that's what I have been informed and told by, that, I mean, board members? I'm not going to discuss legal ramifications in public. You all want to discuss it? Let me say publicly, go ahead and discuss it. But I'm not going to do that, because I have been advised not to. And as chair, I don't want to be placed in that position to be forced to do that. I do not. And I'm asking you not to place me in that position.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So when it comes to open meeting laws, when we say erring on the side of caution, that means we default to meeting in open. We are a public body, and we are required by law to have public discussions. The way that the language in the law is works means that there are certain circumstances in which we can talk enclosed, right? So we can talk enclosed when we're talking about personnel items. We can talk enclosed if there's a litigation matter, and we want to have that discussion. And that gives us the ability to basically protect ourselves legally so that, you know, an employee isn't going to sue us, or we're going to be harmed, or hurt our legal stance for something. This situation does not fall under that cover, for one, because we're, there is no, there's no, there's no litigation. At this point, all we're talking about is whether or not we have a lawyer. And whether or not we have a lawyer, which is paid for with public money, is something that is of public interest. And so it is, you know, regardless of where we stand, particularly on George With, whether you agree with it or not, right? I think it's interesting that what we're saying is our legal counsel did not, said they had a conflict of interest. So I'm asking for legal guidance, and we essentially had a law firm that said that they are now telling us that they couldn't, they couldn't advise us, right? So the question, when it comes to having an open discussion, the question is not, can we, or must we discuss this enclosed? No, because that's not the way the law works. The question is, can we? And in this instance, no, we cannot. And, but regardless, we don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. A part of litigation is next steps. That has to be, from my understanding, discussed and closed. But I will proceed at the will of the board. What say you? Because it is 9:23, and you still, as a board, have to direct me with the next steps. Mr. Young?
I do think it would be in a school district's best interest to identify, have a conversation relevant to an analysis of the argument that has been proffered by the city attorney. Candidly, his legal argument doesn't pass muster with yours truly, but do you think it would be in our best interest to solicit? And I'm confident that the school district can do this at no cost to the taxpayers to solicit an analysis, a pro bono analysis of the city attorney's position, written opinion. Madam Chair, that would, that'd be what I would offer now.
Thank you. I too have two recommendations, as I was listening, and in preparation for this discussion, because I prepare for this discussion. If it's the will of the board, to reach out to a firm to ask for pro bono services and/or ask a firm to write a legal analysis for pro bono services. Again, I just jotted down recommendations in preparation for this meeting. So board members, it's 9:25, and no way am I rushing you. But it would need to be in the form of a motion to guide me, to direct me what the next steps would be. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would offer a motion that the chair of the School Board of City Richmond is directed to, in consultation with the superintendent, identify if there is an opportunity to solicit strictly pro bono services, no cost to the district, relevant to a legal analysis of the city attorney's position.
It was moved by Mr. Young to direct the school board chair in consultation with the superintendent to identify legal services to provide an analysis pro bono.
Second.
It was seconded by Ms. Rizzi. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson?
I just think that the language is a little bit, could be clarified. Could we revise the motion to just say that the board, you know, motions to move forward with securing pro bono legal representation? Like, I don't, you know.
I like to do that in consultation with the superintendent.
I just don't, I don't, I guess I'm not sure why. I'm not clear on.
Mr. Cameras, are you against that, working to, you know, just working together to find a firm that will provide services pro bono to write a legal analysis?
As server, the pleasure of the board, Madam Chair, so whatever you would like.
I just, I just think it's over, I just think it might be a bit complicated. I mean, if anyone has a recommendation on someone, it seems to me they should be able to bring it forth before the body, and then we can make a vote. That's.
Whatever the motion is to direct me to do, I would do it the best of my ability as chair. So Mr. Young, your motion, revise it, not?
I think I inferred from my friends and colleagues something different, Madam Chair, than you did. But I am not prepared to suggest that the school board, at this point, litigate.
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, so maybe I'll.
So who, Ms. Gibson, who would do that if not the board chair? You're asking the board chair to, and board colleagues, please, you know, share your thoughts so I can know how to move on our behalf. The chair, I, okay, let me say this. I don't think now board members need to be making phone calls to different entities about possible legal services. I don't, I don't think that should happen.
Madam Chair, I retain the motion as stated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young is going to retain the motion as stated. Ms. Rizzi seconded that motion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dorr?
Abstain.
Okay. I'm sorry. Ms. White?
Can you repeat that before I vote, because?
The motion made by Mr. Young, and I have Mr. Young repeat the motion.
Madam Chair, I'll do my best. But in regards to school board of City Richmond authorizing the chair of said board in consultation with the superintendent to solicit pro bono legal counsel, exclusively pro bono, relevant to a legal analysis of the city attorney's stated position pertinent to Arthur Ashe.
Thank you. And it was seconded by Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Richardson started roll call vote. I did hear from Ms. Dorr abstaining.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
I believe the motion passes.
Thank you. So board members, I will come back with an update. I'll share with you what that update is per the motion. Moving on to new business, no, excuse me, other informational business, which that has been uploaded for you, have any? And now, I got jibber jabber, let me make sure that I'm straight. New business. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to, going back to 5.01, I will submit a final written report. I do have notes regarding Virginia School Board Association's conference. We did receive an award. Our clerk has the award from the Virginia School Board Association. I am so pleased to have been there, along with the superintendent, to receive this. Out of all the schools in the Virginia School Board Association, we were given an award regarding our partnership, and maybe the superintendent wants to elaborate upon this, regarding how we did feed students with the support of the market at 25th Street. Correct, Mr. Cameras? I was just so pleased and so excited that we were recognized as for school enrollment 10,000 and over, and then there was another one for less than 10,000. So we were recognized for taking care of our students beyond the school day. Can you show them the plaque? Oh, you can read it, thank you.
I will read it. This has been awarded by the Virginia School Board Association. It's the 2022 Food for Thought Award, presented to Richmond Public Schools for their initiative, groceries for students in housing transition, meal access to fight hunger above 10,001.
That's awesome. That is awesome. Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you. Any other? Ms. White, and then Ms. Dorr?
For new business, I would like to put on the record, again, although Mr. Cameras has said it, the clock springs, the update on alarms and notice of violations. And then I want to add one more to review all the curriculums that we now use in RPS.
You want that to be reviewed by, by who?
By the board.
You want the board?
Yes, I would like to know how, all the, I would like to know the curriculums that we have in RPS, all that exists right now.
You said two different things. You said you want to know what exists, and then you said you want us to review.
I want to review all, let me, let me, let me make sure that you have what I have wrote down. I want to review all the curriculums that we have, that exist in RPS. That we're actually using in RPS.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cameras?
You got it.
Yes. I got it. Ms. Dorr?
Excuse me. Just a reminder, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow. Thank you to Mr. Parker for putting together a great agenda. The finance committee members are Ms. Rizzi, Ms. Page, and myself, but of course, anyone is welcome to join. And I sent around a brief survey about any guidance, anything that you guys want to see us prioritize within the finance committee, and any additional feedback or things that you want to let Mr. Parker know. So if you, many of you have responded, which is great, but if you would like to make sure your voices. But if you would like to make sure your voice is heard in that capacity, I'll resend it around and just feel free to respond tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, yesterday I sent you a proposal that I would request your advice on your wisdom counsel relevant to secondary schools and specifically precluding student access during the day to their personal cell phone devices. Welcome your input. Some of you have already weighed in and really thank you for that. And Madam Chair, I look forward to between now and prayerfully, our next meeting on August fifteenth, soliciting, obtaining additional consultation with the expectation that we could have a deliberation then on August fifteenth. Madam Chair, briefly, if it's your pleasure, I'm just going to read for the benefit of the public what, what I submitted to each of, each of you for the purpose of transparency, acknowledging that it's my intent to try to develop some kind of consensus on this board pertaining to this issue. But Madam Chair, what I authored reads as follows. Effective January the second, twenty twenty-three, all middle and high schools shall prohibit student access to personal cellular phone devices while inside a school building between the first and last bell of the day. Schools shall either adopt a requirement that students lock their personal cell phones in a portable device that is retained on the student for the duration of the day or adopt a requirement that students lock said devices in a stationary fixed asset, like for example, new safes or lockers. Alternatively, should a school identify preferred third option relevant to prohibiting student access to cell phones, said school may adopt, so long as the condition included in the initial sentence herein is met. All requisite funds shall be allocated to any school in accordance with the options selected by the school to include fully paying for either portable or fixed means to preclude student access to cell phones. Students shall have access to personal cell phones up to the first bell and subsequent to the last bell while in buildings. Nothing herein should be construed to preclude student access to cell phones when not inside a school building, nor shall students be prohibited from requesting access to school phones in administrative offices. Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, colleagues, thank you for the folks who've already weighed in. And I welcome additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, but not tonight?
Not tonight.
We are going to. Okay, thank, thank you. Ms. Renzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems that we will have quite an agenda the next meeting. If I go back to my notes and, you know, write out all of the things that Mr. Cameras has promised to bring us, I don't necessarily want it to be too heavy. But I, I am asking, is, is, are we going to get a graduation rate report? And when will that be?
Mr. Cameras?
We'll have all the final numbers in October. That's when the state officially publishes them and then we'll do a full presentation.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to add that we consider the proposal as submitted by the Commission on the Status of Latino Students in Richmond Public Schools to form a commission to study the state of the Latino student in RPS.
I agree. And I was going to share if we could have that, that task force open to a student or to, or, you know, just include the students because their voices are so, so important. And, and no one can tell their story or their experiences better than them. So thank you, Ms. Renzi. I was going to mention that I can take it off my list. Anyone else before? Okay. That was new business. Any announcements? Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder, you've probably seen this on the news for the fifth annual Ultimate Backpack event that will take place at the Arthur Ashe Center this, this year on August the eleventh, starting at eight AM. As you know, in the past, this past year, we did twenty-five thousand backpacks. This year, we're going to do fifty thousand and since this is the fifth year. So we've included not only Richmond, but Petersburg and Michaelhan over in Chesterfield County Schools as well. This is a partnership with BCU. That's my master's, my, I'm an alum. Ms. Rizzi works there. Jonathan is an alum. I hope I ain't forgetting about it.
Ms. White?
Right, Ms. White is an alum, yes. So we, we invite and I'll send out an announcement when I get the flyer as well. But this is in partnership with Coldstar Communities and Schools, of course, BCU, Walmart, a long list of organizations. But on that date, we don't give out any supplies. We just collect. So if anybody wants to drop off any school supplies, we welcome the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say I will not be able to be there August the eleventh because my nonprofit organization, Northside College for Children, will be stuffing backpacks for our fourteenth annual back to school rally on August the thirteenth, which will be at Liberation Church, fifty-five zero one Melothean Turnpike. And it will begin promptly at nine and it will end at twelve fifteen. We provide a hot meal, of course, teacher kits, backpacks filled with school supplies. So I will not be able to be there on August the eleventh, but I'm sure that we will be well represented. I also want to share that Summer Fest was hot, but it was great. It was awesome. And I think I'll do it again in the heat because we had the auditorium open for people like me to go in and out to get some AC. Thank you to the Culture and Climate Team for inviting me to the Wellness Institute. The beginning was great. I'm sure the entire day rocked. I have no doubt. Also, thank you to the school leaders for participating in the Soul Train Line during your first day of your School Leadership Institute with me. Thank you so very much. I thought it was awesome to see some of you go through the Soul Train Line. Even the superintendent went through the Soul Train Line. He did. I'm, I can't describe how it looked. I'm just saying he went through the Soul Train Line. That's all I can say. But it was fun. Thank you to the principal directors for sending the invitation. Seeing that there are, and Ms. Renzi, I'm sorry, so you waving?
So I'd like to also shout out the fact that we had a wonderful summer graduation on June twenty-eighth. We're so proud of all the graduates. It was a beautiful ceremony and we're very, very proud of all of our summer graduates for the hard work that they put in.
Yes, and Ms. Renzi? I heard you did a phenomenal job, as you always do. Thank you so much. Thank you. So seeing that we don't have any other announcements, we do have one item to, to discuss in closed session. And I'm sorry, no, we don't. We have more than one item. So we're getting ready to go into closed. And who has the? Ms. Renzi, can you read us into closed?
Yes. Pursuant to sections two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia, I move that the School Board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to consider the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the school board or for discussion, consideration or interview of prospective candidates for employment, specifically including the personnel actions for today and evaluation of specific school board employees.
It's read by Ms. Renzi. Do you have a second? Ms., was seconded by Ms. Door. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Door? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Motion passes.
We're now in closed. Thank you. We'll see you shortly.